Good evening, everybody. Please start taking your seats, please. 7:06, we need to start the meeting. Please take your seats. All right, let's take your seats. Thank you all. The time is 7:07. I now call to order the 2025 Annual Town Meeting of the Town of Stoughton. This meeting is now in session. This town meeting is being held in person at the Stoughton High School Auditorium at 232 Pearl Street, Stoughton. This meeting is also being recorded live through the Stoughton Media Access Corporation and is being recorded for future broadcasting. Please rise and stand as you are able and join me in pledging allegiance to our national flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, if you can remain standing. Tonight, we have joining us this evening to sing the National Anthem, the Old Stoughton Musical Society. And a member of that society is our own, from Precinct 2 Town Meeting Rep Ed Quigley. Mr. Quigley.
Good evening, everyone. Ed Quigley, Precinct 2. I want to say, first of all, thank you to this body. A few years ago, you voted funding for us to buy storage equipment. And I can tell you now that we no longer have records in cardboard boxes or in piles. There are nice, solid metal cabinets that'll be safe for the next 240 years. And I use 240 because this November is the 240th anniversary of the Old Stoughton Musical Society. So we're a little bit younger than the town, but as we all know, the older you get, the age difference doesn't mean that much. So before we begin to sing, I just want to say we have information about the society out on the table in the lobby, if you'd like to read a little bit more about us, and information about our upcoming concert. So thank you very much.
Please be seated. Thank you very much to the Old Stoughton Musical Society. Thank you for coming this evening. All right, good evening again to everybody. At this time, I invite State Representative Bill Galvin to the podium to make a presentation and say a few words.
Good evening, all. It's a pleasure to be here in Stoughton, a nice, quiet town. You know, we, right now, we live in troubled times. There's a lot of controversy locally, but also in Washington. And there's a lot of unpredictability. And there's a lot of threat going on in Washington to the funding, to the state of Massachusetts. We just did our budget in the House, and it was a good budget. But what I'm wary of and what I'm afraid of is that if we do get cut funding from Washington, that we may be back in cutting budgets instead of increasing budgets. But the one good thing, we do have a very good rainy day fund. So hopefully, we'll be fine. And we'll use that to get through this period. But, I don't know, such great news, right? But it's an honor to be here. I do have some citations. I thank Bob for the invite here. You know, we will survive these times. That's what's so good about our government, the way it is. I mean, you look through the periods in history, and it's like it goes down and up and down. So when it looks bad, just remember, in time, it'll get better. But you have to participate in government. And everybody in here, I congratulate you for participating in Town of Stoughton's government. Because if you weren't participating, nothing would get done. So thank you for what you do for the town and for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So I have citations. For the first one is for David Laurie. Is David here? Hey, David. This is the Commonwealth of Mass, House of Representatives. Be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to David Laurie and recognition of your nine years of service to the Town of Stoughton as a member of the Finance Committee, including as vice chair and for your service as a town meeting representative. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this, the fifth day of May, 2025. Signed by the Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano. Thank you. Guess who didn't sign? It's the real one. And signed by your state representatives, Edward Phillips and myself, Representative William C. Galvin. Thank you very much. Especially the Finance Committee. That's a tough committee. And now I have one for Diane Dolan. Hi, Diane. Very similar Commonwealth of Mass, House of Representatives. Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Diane Dolan in recognition of your nine years of dedicated service to the Town of Stoughton as a member of the Finance Committee, including as secretary and for your service as a longtime Town Meeting representative. And the entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this, the fifth day of May, 2025. Signed by Ronald Mariano, Edward Phillips, your state representative, and William C. Galvin is going to sign it right now. Congratulations.
Thank you, Precinct 7, for your faith in me.
And our third and final is Von Anokian. And if I mispronounce it, I apologize. And this is the Commonwealth of Mass, the House of Representatives. Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Von Anokian in recognition of your nine years of dedicated service to the Town of Stoughton as a member of the Finance Committee, including five years as chair and for your longtime service as a Town Meeting representative. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this, the fifth day of May, 2025. Signed by the Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano, your state representative, Edward Phillips, and your state representative, William C. Galvin. This is kind of embarrassing, but... At least you know it's a real signature song.
Thank you all, and hopefully you have a quick meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Representative Galvin. All right, let's just take a quick moment to have the town clerk, Reggie, to swear any time any reps have not been sworn in yet.
Hi, if you can just stand, raise your right hand, repeat after me, or I say, "State your name," you'll state your name. I, state your name, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and partially perform the duties of Town Meeting representative according to the terms of the Town Charter, the bylaws of the Town of Stoughton, and the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Congratulations.
Okay, let's move on. This time, I'd like to recognize Steve Kaby, Chair of the Select Board, and Vice Chair Deborah Roberts.
Thank you all very much. This has been, I don't know if anybody else feels like this was one of the longest years ever, but it's been a wonderful year for Town Meeting especially. And it's really interesting to look at a new set of problems with a fresh set of eyes. This is, as Representative Galvin just acknowledged, the end of the term for three members of the Finance Committee, Diane Dolan, David Laurie, and Von Anokian. All of them very influential in the way that that body operated. And it's going to be a big loss without them. It's going to be a big change without them. And I'm looking forward to seeing what the rest of that body is able to produce over the next year, the way they're going to change the way they think, and perhaps just organically about some of the problems facing our town. And I'm really excited for it, but also at the same time, I will miss the members who have finished their nine-year terms. And so we would like to spend a little time honoring them as well from the Select Board. First, Diane Dolan, if you don't mind joining us again. I don't think anybody else is gonna be doing these, so I think this might be your last, last time up here. But I, I wanted to, uh, just read from the Select Board's, uh, citation. So the town of Stoughton official citation, "Be it hereby known to all that the town of Stoughton offers its sincere appreciation to Diane Dolan in recognition of nine years of service on the Stoughton, uh, Stoughton Committee on Finance and Taxation. Be it further known that the town of Stoughton extends its best wishes for continued success." This one's signed by Steve Kavy. You have one more. And this one, from somebody way more important than me, is from our State Representative, Congressman Stephen Lynch, Youth Representative. Uh, this is the Certificate of Special Congressional Recognition presented to Diane Dolan in recognition of nine years of service on the Finance Committee, most recently as Secretary, longtime Town Meeting Representative, former service, uh, on the Municipal Regulations Committee and Youth Commission, currently serving on the, uh, South School Building Committee and the Stoughton 300th Anniversary Committee. Uh, and this is signed by, by Congressman Stephen Lynch. We're gonna miss you, but also, thank you very much for your time. We'll pass the mic over for a moment to, uh, Vice Chair, Deborah Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I would like to ask David Laurie to step forward. This is a certificate of special congressional recognition signed by Stephen F. Lynch. Thank you. Precinct Six. Oh, don't go anywhere. This is from the Select Board. The town of Stoughton official citation, "Be it hereby known to all that the town of Stoughton offers its sincere appreciation to David Laurie in recognition of nine years of service on the Stoughton Committee of Finance and Taxation. Be it further known that the town of Stoughton extends its best wishes and continued success." Signed by our Chairman, Stephen Kavy.
On the time that I've spent on the, uh, on the Select Board, and even before that, I was on the Finance Committee for a short while. I had, um, uh, good fortune to get to know Von Anokian, who's currently the Chair, pretty well from the beginning. He, he was very hospitable, uh, helped share some information with me, and was very kind to me as I started out on the Finance Committee. And I found in my time on the Select Board, he's, his, uh, his friendship has been valuable. His, uh, leadership has been invaluable. And, uh, he will be somebody I'm desperately gonna miss, because, uh, he and I have had an opportunity to, uh, work through some issues with the way that the Select Board and the Finance Committee were communicating information with the help actually of, uh, our Assistant Town, uh, Manager, Mark Tisdale as well. And, um, we've seen the fruits of that labor, and he's put a lot of time and energy into, into, uh, protecting the integrity and the dignity of the Finance Committee, and has also, uh, likewise protected the dignity and integrity of Town Meeting. So I'd like to, uh, ask him to come join me up here, if he doesn't mind. I promised I wasn't gonna cry, but not sure up here. Uh, so a couple, first from the Select Board. Uh, Town of Stoughton proclamation, be it proclaimed, whereas since 2021, Von Anokian has honored, honorably served as a Town Meeting Representative for Precinct Four, and whereas in 2025, Von Anokian completed his nine-year, uh, nine years of service on the Stoughton Committee on, uh, Finance and Taxation, with four years serving as an effective Chair. And now therefore, we, Stephen M. Kavy, Scott DiCarrora, Depracy Roberts, Lou F. Gito, and Joseph M. McCrisky, in recognition of Von's outstanding years of service to the town of Stoughton, do hereby urge all citizens to join us and other, others townwide to thank Von Anokian. In witness thereof, uh, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the great seal of the town of Stoughton to be affixed on this fifth day of May, 2025. Thank you very much for your time. And again, Congressman Lynch, uh, offered, uh, a congressional, uh, recognition, a certificate of special congressional recognition presented to Von Anokian in recognition of nine years of service on the Finance Committee, five as Chair, and longtime Town Meeting Representative. Signed by Stephen F. Lynch, Member of Congress. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Kavy. Uh, thank you. Yeah, serving, serving nine years on the Finance Committee, obviously long dedicated service, we do appreciate those people. All right, moving on, I'd like to introduce quickly our, uh, Town officials. Uh, Steve Kavy, our Chair of the Select Board. Deborah Roberts, Vice Chair of the Select Board, and members Scott Carrora and Lou Gito over here. Uh, Tom Calder, our Town Manager, is right over there. Our Assistant Town Manager, Mark Tisdale. Elizabeth Zaleski, Finance Director, is over there. And sitting in the reserved section of the auditorium is Amando Barbosa, Vice Chair, and Dr. Jennifer Sears, I believe is over here somewhere. Welcome. And, uh, School Superintendent is also here, Dr. Joseph Bayetta. Uh, thank you for coming. Uh, our Town Council this evening is Jane Freeman from the firm of Me, Tellman, and Costa, right here. Uh, I just wanted to introduce Kamel Drews, our Deputy Moderator over there. Reggie Maderos Kowalczakowski, Town Clerk, I think I got that right. Suzie Gross, Assistant Town Clerk. Michael Moore from the Clerk's Office. And Von Anokian, as you know, we met, as he came up a couple times, Vice Chair, excuse me, Chair of the Finance Committee, and David Laurie, Vice Chair of the Finance Committee. Thank you all very much. Uh, let me just say this, uh, because I heard some chatter this evening as I was coming into the auditorium, as your Town Moderator, I just want to remind everybody, I will fairly and impartially conduct this Town Meeting, and as appropriate, I will accuse myself as necessary. All right, next, next, we're gonna do attendance. To ascertain whether we have a quorum to proceed with both the special Town Meeting and the annual Town Meeting, we'll ask each Precinct Chair from the number of Town Meeting reps that are present, that have checked in with them this evening. Are we ready? First up is Juan Fox, Precinct One. Nineteen, Precinct One. George Stilinski, Precinct Two.
Twenty.
Twenty for Precinct Two. Matthew Callis, Precinct Three. Twenty-one, congratulations to Precinct Three. Julie Gito, Precinct Four. Twenty-one, congratulations to Precinct Four. Kamel Drews, Precinct Five. Sixteen, thank you very much. Robert Kirby, Precinct Six. Eighteen, Precinct Six. Diane Dolan, Precinct Seven. Seventeen, Precinct Seven. And David Sheen, Precinct Eight. Fifteen, Precinct Eight. Okay, let's give the Town Clerk's Office a few minutes to calculate the tally. All right, we have a hundred and forty-seven Town Meeting reps present in the auditorium, and our quorum is eighty-five. We have a quorum present, and we proceed with the business at hand. First of all, we will test our clickers. All right, first, uh, if we all can test the clickers, let me know. Are we ready to test? Okay, go ahead and click, one, two, or three. As you know, one is yes, two is no, three, extension. Okay, just stand by for a minute. Come on, there was no doubt in your minds, was there? We gotta do that again? Are we, are we gonna test this again? All right, we're setting it up again. Okay, please vote now, one, two, or three? We doing okay? All right, anybody that thinks their clicker is has an issue, come on down front, and the Clerk's Office will fix it. What's that? Okay, we have a hundred and thirty-eight responded. Yes, Mr. Coleman? I, could you use that microphone? Can't hear you. Something, question on the clickers?
Those displayed numbers weren't in order, so we don't know when our number is changing. Uh, can that be corrected? Because it really didn't accomplish anything.
Let me just answer that.
Thank you.
The, the numbers will come up as you click.
No, that, that's not the problem. When we, normally, you go from one through what however many there are.
All right, well, hang on a minute.
This time it wasn't, so we don't know if our clicker is actually working.
I believe we're good. Okay, well, just give me a moment, we'll check with the Clerk's Office. All right, we just need a few more minutes, technical glitchy. Okay, we're gonna try this again. Okay. Everybody knows your number, see if you can find your number on the screen. She's gonna leave the screen up. So once it comes back, it's not on the screen yet. It's not showing yet. Just take a moment. Okay, there we go. Hold on. Okay, okay, they're ready to go now. Can we stop it and show the screens, or it just keeps on rolling? Okay. Is everybody clicking? All right, all right, what?
Yeah, we can't see the numbers, and they're not in order.
And, we know that, we know they're not in order.
Okay, and I don't, all right.
Okay. Okay, we just need a few minutes to get this, to work through this issue. Okay, we just need a few minutes to get this, to work through this issue. We good to go?
Yeah, it's, it's
Can we vote now? So, we're gonna, we're gonna start now? Okay, let's start now. Clickers in hand. And I would making sure if you can see the lights on your clickers. Vote now, one, two, or three. I'm not gonna be able to put these in order, so everybody just vote. Yours is not working? No, it's, they're not gonna be in numerical order this evening. It's random. That's, I'm sorry, but that's what I'm told, so. It's not working this year. Oh, there's been a software update. In the meantime. Okay? Okay, we Alright. Did everybody vote with their clicker? Alright, we have 139 that voted. One four after 140? Is there anybody that has not voted? I don't know how many people in the audience right now. Patrons? You want to say it? Okay, no, Tom, Tom, I'll do that. Okay, yeah, we're gonna get a quick explanation from the technical team. Okay, we did have a, let me, can I get everybody's attention, please? We did have a software update recently. And it's just not putting in order like it has in the past. Okay, well, they're gonna try one more thing on the system here. The software update has, shows on the screen a little differently than, than it has in the past years. Uh, why don't we just hold on, Ed, I mean, we're letting it to I can't hear you? You wanna come forward? Alright, he's asking, let me just pass along what he just said. What Mr. Ed has said. Ed DiFleese has said. Is everybody lights, are your lights coming on? Red, green, or yellow? Okay. But the, the technical team is just trying to check it out, we need a few more minutes.
Hi, could we, while we're waiting for the technical team, at least start doing the procedural motions and stuff, so that we can move along?
Right, we'll, we'll keep moving, we'll keep moving. Yeah, well, it might have to do it old school, for sure. Okay. Um, for the procedural motions. I'm gonna ask for a voice vote, I'm gonna ask Kamel Drews, the deputy moderator, to read each, read each procedural motion one at a time. Then I'll ask for a voice vote on it. Kamel? Uh, not right now, we're in the process, hang on.
Um, motion one, move to Move to open the annual town meeting on May 5th, and then suspend the annual town meeting to open the special town meeting, and hear the special town meeting articles as the first order of business at the May 5th session of town meeting.
It's been seconded by Cynthia Walsh. All in favor by his voice vote, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed?
No!
Any abstentions? Hearing none, the ayes have it, declare that a vote. Article, um, the motion number two there, Kamel.
Motion two, move to have the following article heard as the first order of business at the Wednesday, May 7th session of the annual town meeting. Article 46, Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee Bylaw.
Seconded, who seconded? Cynthia Walsh, seconded by Cynthia Walsh. By voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye!
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Declare that a vote. Number three, Kamel.
Move to dispense with the reading of the warrant and the return thereof.
Seconded by Cynthia Walsh. By voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye!
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, declare that a vote. Number four, Kamel.
Move that no motions for reconsideration of any budget amount shall be in order until all departments have been initially voted.
Seconded by Cynthia Walsh. By voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye!
All opposed? Hearing, uh, abstentions? Hearing none, declare that a vote. Number five, Kamel.
Move that any substantive or complex amendments or substitute motions, i.e. anything beyond clerical corrections, for an article other than the operating budget, be considered only if in writing, and further that such proposed substitute motions or amendments be delivered in writing to the town moderator 48 hours in advance of the session at which the motion is to be made. Motions to be emailed to the moderator at b mullen@stoughton-ma.gov, and a copy to the town clerk at reggie@stoughton-ma.gov.
Seconded by Cynthia Walsh. By voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye!
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, declare that a vote. Number six, please.
Move to act on the articles as printed in the town warrant.
Seconded by Cynthia Walsh. By voice vote, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye!
All opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, declare that a vote. Number seven, please.
Move that no reconsideration of any article take place until the last article has been completed at town meeting.
Seconded by Cynthia Walsh. By voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, declare that a vote. Number eight, please.
Move that town meeting does not take up any new business after 10:30 PM.
Seconded by Cynthia Walsh. By voice vote, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye!
All opposed? Any abstentions? I declare the ayes have it, and declare that a vote. Thank you all. Alright, let's move on. Uh, are we ready with these, software? Okay, the software is not gonna do numerical order. Alright? Okay, it's not gonna work for us in numerical order. Alright, let's move on. Point of personal privilege? Uh, it's, your point of personal privilege is what, sir? Please, please state your name. And precinct.
My name is Ian Turlin, precinct two.
Yep, and is your personal point of privilege has to do some, with something, an article in the warrant?
Um, no, it addresses you, uh, town moderator.
Okay. Uh, you're gonna have to stop right there, what do you wish to do?
Uh, I wish to Could I read a statement?
Uh, no, you have a po, you said you have a point of personal privilege, what, what do you wish to do?
Uh, I wish to make, um, a request to the, uh, the body here to see if they would, uh, consider a statement that I'd like to read.
Okay. Uh, I'm not gonna allow that. It's not proper, it's not in the, not in the warrant. And I believe you're gonna Excuse me! You have out of order, I did not recognize you. The moderator is in charge of this meeting. Now, I believe I, I heard about your email that went out. I've consulted with the experts. What you're trying to do is not an allowable action. The president, I consulted with the president of the Massachusetts Moderates Association. I've consulted with the State Ethics Commission, they have, I have complied with their guidance. Your motion, if it's, if, and your point of order is, is out of order, point of privilege. The vote cannot be valid, as there's no provision in state law, the town charter, town meeting time, or in practice, to remove a duly elected town moderator. Your only action is to go back to the electorate. That's it, sir. So, on the Massachusetts General Law, chapter 39, the rulings of the town moderator are final. We're gonna move on. Thank you very much. Okay, please, everybody Be cordial, everybody, please be professional. Alright, let's move on. I believe the clickers are Can I get a, uh, ruling from the IT team, are we ready? Can we use the clickers? Okay. Okay, the, the, the clickers are working properly. Thank you. Alright, at this time. Um, since in the procedural motions, we're gonna We're going to go to the special town meeting first. That was approved and voted on by the procedural motions. Uh, before you is the consent agenda for the special town meeting. If we can get that up on the screen. Just take a moment. Uh, what, Kamel just brought up a good point to me. Uh, just wanna remind everybody what the consent agenda is and what it does. What we try to do, like in other towns, is to put on the consent agenda Articles that have been the past Uh, have been fairly easily, have been approved in past town meetings. Or that we feel that would be easily approved this town meeting. Instead of putting, instead of voting on them one at a time, having a debate on them, Uh, go back and forth on them. Is generally to put them onto a, an agenda. So, like at a selectman's meeting or some other meetings that have consent agendas. And, and vote them all in one, one motion. So, in this case, the consent agenda for the special town meeting shows you Article, special town meeting article one, which is, uh, three, four, and five. Uh, I'm gonna have Kamel Drews, if you could just read the motion there, please.
Move to accept special town meeting 2025 consent agenda as written, and approve special town meeting articles one, three, four, and five.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Ed Quigley. Alright, so at this time, uh, we can have a little debate if necessary, see someone that the
Mr. Moderator, is this one?
Yes.
Uh, John Anzavino, precinct four. Uh, I'm gonna move to table this consent agenda, as we normally do not put money in stabilization until we're through all the articles, and we know if we need money for anything else, or if we have extra money that we need to put away. So, my motion is to table these.
Okay, it moved and seconded. Okay, just confirming that, move to table is not debatable. Uh, by voice vote, we're gonna try by vote. You wanna set it up? Oh, let's just take a moment to set it up, so we're giving you a clear vote on it. You wanna use the microphone? Uh, point of order on this consent agenda? Please identify yourself to the body, please.
Sanders, Sanders is a precinct one, I didn't know if you wanted to just explain, we have a lot of new town meeting reps. Just explain what we're doing, so that they know what they're voting on.
Okay, at this point in time, um, Mr. Anzavino made a motion to table this consent agenda. Uh, tabling means to, pretty much, put it on the table, put it aside for the time being, and then at some point later on in the meeting, basically, take it off the table, and, uh, debate it or take action on it. So, that's pretty much straightforward, just put it aside for the time being. We don't, uh, discuss it or even vote on it at this point in time, if it passes. And, uh, we'll take it off the table later on, at the appropriate time. And while we're setting this up, this will require a two-thirds vote. For a town meeting time, requires two-thirds vote. That means when you vote, at least two-thirds of the people in attendance have to vote yes. If it's less than that, the motion fails. Who's asking, Mr. Cohen? Identify yourself, please.
Robert Cohen, precinct five. For new members, would you tell them what one, two, and three stand for, so they know what they're voting for?
Sure. On your clickers, one's yes, two no, three extension. There's classes afterwards, if you wanna take a class on these clickers. Yeah, we're just waiting. Let me find out what's, what the status is. Okay, I apologize for the delay, we haven't Okay, I apologize for the delay, we're having a little issue with the software.
Mr. Moderator, I want to make sure my motion was clear. I had asked that we table this because we normally take up stabilization funds or putting money away until after we have concluded all the business for the warrant articles that may need money, or if there is extra money that we would be available. So my motion is to table this until we're done with all town meeting business.
Right, no, I understand your motion.
All right.
Thank you. Do you have a point of order?
I think so.
Well, why don't you state your name, precinct number?
Hi, Lisa Lyons, precinct two. So just a quick question to clarify this.
Yeah, it's not debatable, we're not debating this. Do you have a point of order?
I'm just, well, as a, as a, I have a question on the process, is this tabling in terms of making a motion to, to save money at the beginning of town meeting versus at the end of town meeting?
No. Mr. Anzavino, I think you made it clear, he's tabling this so we, if we decide that we need money for different articles, I believe, Mr. Anzavino, for any reason.
I simply stated, typically we do our stabilization funds or put money aside till the end of all the warrant articles that may require money, or somebody may want to make a change to a motion that's out there, or you could be maybe turning something down and you'd have more money to put away. So it's a very simple motion, table, table this until after all the warrant articles have been heard.
Uh, just point of order.
Okay, Mr. Laurie, make a-
Yeah. The point of order is that this is a special town meeting consent agenda, not the regular annual town meeting consent agenda, correct?
It is a special.
So if it is, then we're talking about moving four articles against a total of, what, seven?
Yeah, let me, let me get clarification of those articles. Mr. Laurie, let me get clarification, I understand your question. Okay.
Mr. Moderator.
Hang on a minute, please. Okay, I just got clarification, these articles have to stay within the special town meeting. They can't go be moved into the annual town.
Mr. Moderator, it's your discretion whether you hear the special at the beginning or after the annual town meeting. Nothing says the special town meeting has to be heard first.
We had a procedural motion that we take up special town meeting for us. We open the annual and then we enter to the special.
Mr. Moderator.
Identify yourself again, please.
My name is Bob Cohen, I'm in precinct five. Can we do something, take a voice vote or do something? We've been sitting here for a half hour doing nothing.
I understand your frustration. Okay, let's, okay, make it quick because time is running out.
Technical, I noticed that when I pushed my clicker, it showed up on the board. So that's why it's, if you push your clicker-
We're not talking about clickers right now.
So now it's running.
We moved on. All right, all right, let's get some order in the, in the room here. All right, let's get some order, please, I know that we're having some issues. Do you have another quick, well, you gotta use the microphone, I know you, use your crutches, sir.
Mr. Moderator, for the record, precinct two now has twenty-one people in attendance. Thank you.
Okay, can you continue, I'm told you guys are already voting to continue, so continue the vote. Yes, vote now, please. Voting, motion to continue, uh, excuse me, to table this consent agenda. Yes, no, or abstain. To table, this is a motion to table the consent agenda. And it's gonna take a few twenty seconds or so. You wanna say that? Okay, yeah, I did.
You know, I may be voting for what you-
All right, we have to redo the vote on that. All right, we're gonna revo, revote. Everybody stand by. Stand by the vote, don't do it just yet. This is on the motion to table. This is on the motion to table. Stand by. Motion to table. Table consent agenda for the special town meeting articles. We might have to do that, just. Stand by, just stand by, be patient, please, you've been all been very patient. Let's just hold on. Okay. Are we voting? You're gonna tell me when to vote. Ladies, you're gonna let me know when it's ready to vote. Okay, vote right now? Vote now, please. How we doing? We good? Okay, motion, okay. Motion fails. Seventy-five yes, sixty-one no, three abstentions. Okay, we're back to the consent agenda. Can we step back to consent agenda? Okay, while we're waiting, Pat Colburn, did you have, Pat Colburn, did you give a point of order or something?
You said we were going to discuss the motion, discuss-
The consent agenda, right.
Yes.
Well, only if you have something regarding it, you know what I mean?
I do, it's important.
Okay, all right, go ahead, while we're waiting to set this up.
Pat Colburn, precinct four. I, I really object to this consent agenda, I'm not sure if everybody in this room realizes that this consent agenda is six million, three hundred thirty-five dollars, six million, three hundred thirty-five thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars and sixty-three cents. That is not something we should be consent agendering, um, that's a made-up word. This is not a housekeeping article, this is not accepting paved roads. This is six point three million dollars, and if we're trying to rush through town meeting, it shouldn't be over six point three million dollars. So I've never done this before, but I'm just gonna ask for your consideration to vote no on every single one of these items, then at the end of town meeting, we can reconsider and vote them at that time. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Next.
Hi, Carolyn Campbell, precinct four. I agree with the previous speaker, I'd like to point out that these, I do not, I also do not believe that, um, stabilization funds articles are an appropriate thing for consent agenda. We are required to show a two-thirds majority vote for those transfers, so those votes should be taken, not just assumed through a consent agenda, thank you. And I would also ask that people wouldn't, um, consider voting no, so that we could actually discuss the stabilization funds at the appropriate time, which should have been planned before this meeting to happen at the end of town meeting after all the article articles of both the special and annual had taken place. Thank you.
Right, well, as we stated, these, these, uh, special, the special town meeting articles are staying within the special town meeting. Okay, but thank you. All right, we're just waiting if we can take a vote on the consent agenda. All right, if, um, might have to take a standing vote? Okay?
Point, point of order if we, Eric Coleman, precinct five, point of order if I can?
Point of order, Eric, please state it.
If we don't, if we don't, uh-
You have to speak right into the microphone, I can't hear you.
If we don't dissolve the special town meeting, then it goes on and we can vote for it at the end, is that correct? We can, it can continue and we can go into the annual town meeting, is that correct?
Uh, I'm gonna refer that to town council.
If it, if town, if the special town meeting is not dissolved and is suspended, it could be opened up at the end of the meeting.
Thank you, that's a good way to go.
Okay, all right, how we doing here? I'm not sure what the status is, are you, is a vote, you guys didn't tell me anything, please, from here on out, tell me when to vote, I appreciate that. Okay, hang on a minute, we, nobody knows when to vote, can we, can we set that up again, please? Okay, can we set that, I'm, don't mean to be, I'm trying to be patient, thank you. Not trying to raise my voice here. Well, the numbers are now gonna be in numerical order, I'm told?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, well, let's set this up again to vote. Okay, it's on on the screen here, this is a simple majority vote. So vote now, one, two, or three, thank you. Voting on the consent agenda, one, two, or three. We're voting on the consent agenda for the special town meeting, one, two, or three, it's a simple majority to pass this. Okay, motion, the motion for a special, uh, the consent agenda fails, thirty-nine yes, ninety-nine no, one abstention. Two, I'm sorry, two abstentions. Thirty-nine yes, ninety-nine no, two abstentions.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Would this be an appropriate time to, uh, make a motion that we suspend the special town meeting until after the annual town meeting is completed?
Okay, yep, that's good, okay, you can do that. Okay, what's the motion?
The motion is to suspend the special town meeting until after the annual town meeting.
Second.
The reason for that is we can then vote the stabilizations at the end.
That's fine, okay.
Thank you.
Just checking on the vote status here, should be. Okay, this would be a simple majority to suspend the special to go into the annual.
I, I just kinda-
Was there, who was the second? I need a second, Bob Cohen?
I just-
Bob Cohen, second in that? Okay.
Mr. Moderator? Sorry, Becca Marks in precinct seven. Before we vote on this, can somebody explain the repercussions of yes versus no?
I can't, we, I can't hear you what you're saying.
Can somebody explain if we vote yes versus, we're, we're just saying let's vote, but we don't understand if we vote yes, what happens, or if we vote no, what happens? Can someone explain what happens?
Can you explain that?
A yes vote would be to suspend the special town meeting until a later time. A no vote would be not to suspend.
But what does it affect? Does, if we vote no, if we put the, we put the special at the end, does it affect anything for town meeting?
No, you would, the items that are on the agenda for the special town meeting would come up later.
I have a, a point of, a, a point of order, clarification. Does, does the town leadership wish to take a twenty-minute recess and figure this out and provide us with the guidance that we need? This is so confused, we still do not know what's happening, and we've been here for ninety minutes.
I understand that, we just had some technical issues, but we're moving along now.
The technical issue was a, 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 a vote we all took on a motion that we're now trying to take back.
No.
Point, point of information.
Mr. Laurie?
There's, just so everybody's aware, with a yes vote to suspend, you're not just suspending four articles for stabilization, article five, deposit to OPEB, which is other post-employment benefit trust fund, article six, close prior year fund deposits, and article seven, transfer to South Elementary Project, just so people are aware that those three go with the first four.
I think everybody understands that, that you can see the book. So the motion is, who, who made the motion?
Was there a reason the special town meeting was first and not second? Like, I'd like to take your advice about why it was first, but I don't understand what's happening.
Right, it is. We always went into the special. Okay, but since there is a lot of, um, money's there, the funds there, it's, uh, the motion on the floor is to suspend the special town meeting and, uh, go into the annual town meeting. Okay, so, do, what's on the screen now? Are they voting? Okay, but nobody told me we're voting, you gotta tell me. You can't put it on the screen. Okay, look, let, let me get some clarity in the room here. Could everybody please stop talking? Please pay attention to this now. Please do not start voting until the moderator tells you the vote, okay? I know things might show up on the screen, but once someone starts clicking, it starts moving along. moving along. So we all have to be coordinated on this. You've got to stop clicking on your clicker at the vote right away as soon as you see the article up on the screen. We have to synchronize it a little bit, so the software will work for us, okay? Otherwise, it's just going to be a mess throughout the night. It's nobody's fault, that's just where the software is. So if everybody can just follow the process here, we can get through this a little quicker. All right, so, can I get that back on the screen? Okay, it's 20 seconds. Once it goes on the screen, let me know. Please vote now, one, two, or three. Now, nobody's in trouble, it's just having a challenging evening. All right. The motion to suspend the special town meeting passes. Ninety-five yes, forty-two no, one abstentions. Thank you all.
Mr. Moderator, point of interest.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Peter Murphy, precinct two. We took a vote on article one of the special town meeting, which actually failed. Now, when we go back to the special town meeting, can we reconsider that article one?
Good question. Well, this consent agenda, I got to...
Who was voting? No.
It failed, nope?
Okay.
Got clarification, it failed.
Just wanted to be clear.
Right, okay, thank you all. All right, let's go, let's turn back, let's turn to the pages for the annual town meeting. Okay, annual town meeting, we do have a consent agenda for the annual town meeting. We already opened up the annual town meeting, then we went in... No, no, let me, everybody's got to pay attention this evening, okay? The microphones are on. We, in the procedural motions, we would open the annual town meeting, which was voted on, and then we suspend it and go into the special town meeting. Then, we're in the special town meeting, and then we just made a motion which passed, suspended the special, it was decided the body want to go back to the annual. Now we're back on the annual town meeting. Okay? Hopefully, the people at home are very clear on that, too. All right, now we have a consent agenda. All right. All right, but before we go forward, I'm going to ask for the motion from Kamel Drews, deputy moderator.
Move to accept consent agenda as written and approve annual town meeting articles two, three, four, five, six, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and sixteen.
Okay, who made the second? Elliot Hanson, second by Elliot. All right. So on the consent agenda for the annual town meeting. All right, Mr. Anzavino?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, John Anzavino, precinct four. On article 12 and article 13, it's requesting funding for the CBA of two of the associations and so forth. There's no money listed in the article. It just says, it's there, according to the CBA. We don't have any information on what this is costing the town. I'd like to take those two out of the consent agenda, so we can take them in order.
Well, would you like to ask that question first and see what it is costing the town?
That's up to you, if you, if you want to do it that way, it's just, we don't have any cost to the town, and I think we should have that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anzavino. Will you be able to have the answer from Mr. Anzavino, the cost of the town? Mr. Town Manager?
Director of Human Resources.
Thank you very much, sir.
So the...
Please identify yourself, please.
Deanna Chatsko, HR. The THA contract is built within the operating budget. It was signed and ratified prior to the budget process, so the funding is built within. And as far as the cost of it, if you go to your backup of the actual MOA, there's a page that has the cost of the contract on both of the agreements. And the library, CBA, same thing, the dollar amount is in the back of the MOA, and that is not built within the individual lines of the library, but there is a line that is now in HR, and that line is to cover any unsettled contracts, which would mean the library. And then the other contract that is not signed is the DPW, as the town manager explained last year. If the MOA was not to the finance committee by December 31st ratified, then we would not bring it to the spring town meeting. So that hopefully will appear on the fall town meeting, and we will have the funding within the budget, so we won't be looking for any additional funding at that point.
Thank you.
Point of information.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, I wanted to help.
Thank you, you're welcome. Pat, did you have a point of information?
Yeah, Pat Colburn, precinct four. The total, if my math is correct, for this consent agenda is $1,096,834.80. Cedar Hill Enterprise is $502,126.25. The CBA for the library for the year 2026 is $37,388.21. The CBA for THA is $57,320.39 for 2026, and the supplemental departmental budgets of $500,000. So I was hoping we could pull article 16 to get an explanation of why we're supplementing to the tune of $500,000.
Okay, Pat, you want to hold article 16? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, I'm asking, this year, I'm asking, six other town meeting reps to stand with you to hold. Okay, we count. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. All right, so we have 11 people holding, so we're going to withdraw, excuse me, bad word there, we're going to hold article 16, was it?
Yes, and vote the rest.
And vote, okay, yep, everybody understand that? For clarity, in this case?
Mr. Moderator?
We're just holding 16. Okay?
Mr. Moderator?
I'm sorry.
If I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Article number 16, supplemental fiscal year 25 budgets, that's for the snow and ice deficit. I just want people to be clear, that's for snow and ice.
Did everybody understand that? Okay. Can't hear you, you have to speak up again, Biz, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Article 16, the supplemental budget is strictly for snow and ice, and that's the only thing in this budget, and that'd be transfer from free cash to cover that supplemental budget. That's the only thing in there.
With that explanation, I'll withdraw my motion to pull article 16.
Okay, so your motion's withdrawn?
Yes.
Okay, so the full consent agenda stands. Everybody clear on that now? The full consent agenda. All right, so I'm just going to, so that's, I'm going to read the motion. Move to accept consent agenda as written and approve annual town meeting articles two, three, four, five, six, 11, 12, 13, and 16, all of them included. All right, this will be a simple majority. All right, once we get it up on the screen, please let me know. Please silence your phones, please. Where's Mr. Anzavino? You didn't remind me to silence everybody's phones. All right. Please silence your phones. And just a while, we're waiting. So, once we approve this, we will, when these articles appear in the book, we skip right over them, since they're already, hopefully, been approved, depending upon the outcome of this vote.
Mr. Moderator?
Who's, Mr. Town Manager?
May I suggest that we try it on a voice vote, and then just hold it if it doesn't pass on the voice show?
Well, taken, Mr. Coulter, thank you for your suggestion. All right, we're going to try this on a voice vote. This is to approve consent agenda for the annual town meeting, as listed, those articles. On a voice vote, this is to a simple majority. All those in favor, nice and loud, say yes. Aye, whatever you want to say, aye. Okay, all those opposed? All right, any abstentions? I declare that a vote that the yeas have it, the ayes has it, okay, the ayes. All right, so that, all those articles do pass, and they will not be discussed this evening again. Thank you all. All right, so two, three, and four are done, I'm just looking through the list, we're going to move up to number seven. That appears on page 24 in the warrant books. And to the clerk's office, just record that as a voice vote, simple majority is a voice Yeah, we don't do one, that's the only ceremoniously article there. Okay, this is article seven, and this appears on, as I said, page 24 in your books.
That the, should I read it right now?
And, are we all there?
I'm ready.
Okay, Mr. Chairman of the FinCon, Von Anokian, please read the motion.
That the town vote pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F and 1/2, to appropriate the sum of $1,4,453.17 to fund the Stoughton Public Health Association enterprise for fiscal year 2026, with $444,453.17 to be raised from FY 2026 public health revenue and other available funds, and $300,000 to be transferred from public health fund retained earnings, and $260,000 to be transferred and appropriated from free cash.
Thank you, is there a second? Who's seconded that? Bob Cohen, thank you, we just have to record that for the record, thank you. Mr. Anokian, can you please read the finance committee report?
Finance committee voted eight to four to zero to approve and recommend to town meeting article seven as written in the warrant.
Thank you. Presenting is Mr. Tom Coulter, Town Manager. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to, yeah, so Janet Crimmens, Director of Stoughton VNA and Public Health. I just wanted to thank the town meeting for your support year after year in funding, finding the value of our local nurses. We want to continue to find ways to provide these valuable services while being fiscally responsible and reducing any subsidy that we are asking for the town. So we are currently exploring an innovative program in conjunction with the fire department that may help us just do that. I'll be at, this program is in the research phase, and we don't have that much information to offer at this time, but I wanted to give that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Coulter? Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We deal with this every year. The VNA is an enterprise fund, meaning we account for it separate from your operating budget. And I know that VNA is a favorite of folks in Stoughton, particularly our seniors. We have a structural deficit in this department, and it should be noted, the structural deficit is almost dollar for dollar equal to what we charge this enterprise fund for indirect costs. The other departments do not get that allocation, they do not get that charge. So if it weren't an enterprise fund, it would be a break even business. But it is an enterprise fund, so it pays about $260,000 a year in indirect costs. I want to just give you a little bit of information. As long as this VNA is dependent upon Medicare Advantage, it will have a structural deficit. You may ask why that's the case. It's the case because for every dollar we bill, we lose money. If we get $60 for the nurse, we get reimbursed 40. So the math is pretty clear, you can't make that up in volume. You can't grow the business out of a structural deficit, because you lose money by the unit price. So as we look at VNA moving forward, I don't think there'll be much debate as to the love for and the value of our nurses in Stoughton. However, the business model is broken, and even though they have reduced their expenses and increased their revenue in the past year, again, as I said, the more revenue you do with Medicare Advantage, the more money you lose. So we're looking to change the business model, and I won't get into the details tonight, but we expect to move towards a model that is, was created by Boston EMS, adopted by the City of Milton, and adopted by the Town of Norwell. There's nobody on this part of Massachusetts doing. And I won't give it an acronym, I won't give it a name, I don't want to get into the program, that's not on the agenda. But as we change this business model, we're going to be reassigning our VNA to our EMS fire department, and we'll be doing proactive medical care. It's the state of the art now in Massachusetts. The idea actually came from the show, Chicago Fire, where someone who's in post-op and released early will be treated by a visiting nurse or a medic at their home. The objective is to keep people out of the hospital where they can recover at home. We'll get into that business model in the fall, as we've fully vetted it. But what we're asking town meeting for right now is to, once again, at least for one more year, support the organization that is breaking even on a cash basis, but on an accounting basis where it pays indirect costs, it's got a structural deficit. And by the fall, we'll be introducing to you a new business model that will maintain the same services we get right now, while changing the way we bill insurance companies and changing the way we work with hospitals to get us into the, into the positive side of the income statement. Thank you for listening, I hope you support this article. Thank you, Mr. Coulter. Okay, just a reminder for everybody, after the presenter, presenter gets 10 minutes, there's another clock over here, behind Kamel. Do we go into technical questions? Each town meeting rep, I'm sorry, each town meeting rep gets two technical questions. After that, we'll set up pro and con debate stands, the microphones, and you have two to three minutes for your pro and con comments, and then we, if needed, we do a summary, and then we vote on it, okay? Please identify yourself for your technical questions.
Stephen Wilkinson, precinct four. Could you tell me what ARPA stands for?
Who's asking that question? What was the question?
In the budget, the one, two, three, four, fifth line down, ARPA funding, $328,512.
Your microphone's right there.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the member of the public. ARPA stands for the American Rescue Plan Act. That funding is no longer available, that funding was available for a short period of time, and that was a result of all the COVID activity.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up, please identify yourself and ask your questions.
Juan Fox, precinct one. Notice that the FinCon vote was not unanimous, it was eight to four. I'm curious as to what the four people who voted no, what their disagreement is with this particular article.
Okay, Mr. Anokian, will you be able to answer that?
The question is why the four people voted no? I don't know the reason, I don't know the reason those four people voted no. David, you one of the people voted no?
I voted yes. I don't know.
Okay, if we can't answer, just say we can't answer that. It's a direct answer. We cannot answer that, correct? We don't have an answer for you, sir, sorry. Four people voted no.
I don't know the reasons why those four people voted no, they didn't share that with me.
Okay, thank you. Next up?
Sandra Souza, precinct one. Could you, I don't know if it's in here someplace, I can't find it, could you tell me what your current staffing level is?
So currently, I have two full-time nurses, and I have one per diem nurse. And we have one regular physical therapist, and we have two per diem therapists, and a per diem occupational therapist.
What was the last one? I'm sorry.
A per diem occupational therapist.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Moderator, may I expand on that a bit? Sure. So for the gentle lady's question, that's what's wrong with Medicare. Although we have very little demand for services other than VNA and occasionally, physical therapy, a condition of getting Medicare reimbursements is you can, you have to provide all of those services. And on the other three services, we lose money incrementally. But in order to get Medicare reimbursement, you have to have all those services. This new model will take us into the private pay, or, not private pay, private insurance company pool. Great question, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Coulter. Anybody else? Technical question period.
Just real quick, so I under-
Please identify yourself, please.
Lisa Lyons, Precinct 2. So I understand we're in a structural deficit, and we have been, how long have we been in a structural deficit in the VNA?
Actually, a good question, Lisa. Years ago, VNA was one of our most profitable enterprise funds. It's only as Medicare has changed that you can't make any money in Medicare. By the way, we're one of only two municipalities that have a VNA in the entire Commonwealth. The other one is active. Everybody has exited it because they can't make any money. But I can't speak to that. I'm only focused on this year's budget. But I can tell you, years back, before my time, this was a profitable business.
So we don't know how many years we've been in a structural deficit?
I didn't prepare for that, no.
Okay.
Okay, thank you both.
Mr. Chairman, Moderator.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Geo. Identify yourself, please.
Lou Gito, Water Selectman, Precinct 4, representative. If you were to look at the information that you have in your book, you'd find that this is the fourth year we spent a million dollars in this program in order to support this. Page 25 in your book.
Thank you very much. All right, I don't see anybody else. All right, we're gonna move into pro and con debate. We're just putting up the microphones. On this side is the con. You have two to three minutes. As you know, in past annual meetings and special town meetings, two to three minutes for your pro and con comments. And over this side is your pro section over here. It'll be the same thing in the back.
Is this descending, or is that right you want?
This is pro, this is con. This is to try to move the dialogue along a little faster.
You mean, we gotta walk all the way down there to talk?
No, no, we'll put one up there for you. There should be a microphone on that side, too. I believe. No? Michael, is there a microphone on that side? We're short one. Okay, why don't we use that as, for the time being, for Mr. Cohen to use? Sorry, Bob, to make you walk back and forth.
You're killing me, that's what you're doing. Early grave, Stanewski's.
Okay, please identify yourself.
My name is Robert Cohen from Precinct 5.
Bob, would you like a moment to take a breath or anything?
What bothers me here is, I'll be 81 years old next month, and without these people, I'd be in my grave. You can talk all you want, the good years we took millions and millions of dollars to support this town. And when you have Medicaid, they pay for an X-ray, $12. The hospitals, these people come to your house, they get paid nothing by Medicaid. And when you get to be that age, you respect these people. They're terrific, terrific people. I don't care what we pay for them. They're worth every dollar. And if they revive themselves, they'll be making millions, and we'll be drawing out them again. Remember, when we didn't have any money, we drew out of their trust fund. And I think this is a great deal. It's just like rubbish. When you get to a certain age, they're terrific. Please vote for them and give them their support.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cohen. Anybody else? We're moving right along. Mr. Murphy, you going to the microphone?
I'm going to the pro mic. It's easier to go this way than that way. Don't like the idea.
There's gotta be a little bit of both up there, I believe. No more que, no questions at this time. All right, identify yourself, please.
Precinct 2, Peter Murphy. Again, as I spoke before, town meeting. Few years ago, people realized I had a stroke, and I went into, had to go to rehab. I came home, had the Stoughton visiting nurses come out. They did a great job assessment. Their physical therapists were fantastic. And this is one of those things. It's like the spare tire in the back of your car. If you don't need it, you don't need it. But when you need it, you damn well better have it. We need the Visiting Nurses Association. And again, when COVID came along, they were there to implement there. So again, I hope that you support this article.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Seeing none. All right, Mr. Coulter or the department head, would you like to do a summary, or you want to just be good for the vote? Well, I'd like to thank the two previous speakers. What these, what these ladies do, and they are all ladies, what these ladies do on a daily basis is beautiful. And I really respect the folks of Stoughton, that you see the value that they bring, and you've always supported them. My hope is that this is the last year we'll ask for subsidy, and that you'll be very proud to have the, one of only two municipal VNA's in the Commonwealth. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Coulter. Okay, we're ready for the vote. Once we set it up. Are we ready for the vote? Okay, can I tell them to vote? Please vote now. 1, 2, or 3. Again, 1 yes, 2 no, 3 abstain. This is simple majority. Okay, Article 7 passes. 122 yes, 13 no, 3 abstentions. To clear that a vote. All right, let's move on, please. Next up? Should be Article 8, Sewer Department Enterprise Fund Budget, which is on page 26 in your books. Okay, before, well, Mr. Anokian, I just want to say, as we've done in the past years, this also involves the sewer department budget in the pages in the back. If we vote this, I'm not saying how to vote this, but once we vote on this, that closes the sewer department budget. Okay, everybody clear on that? And the other thing is Kamel is running the speed clock over here. So those people, the presenters, have 10 minutes in total time, and the pro and con debate has 3 minutes. It'll be counting down. Sorry, Mr. Anokian, to take up your time, but go ahead. You can read the motion, please.
You want me to read now?
Yes, please.
That the town vote pursuant to the provision of General Law Chapter 44, Section 53 F and 1/2 to appropriate the sum of $9,176,193.56 to fund the sewer department for fiscal year 2026 to be raised from FY 2026 sewer enterprise revenue.
Seconded by Elliot Hansen. All right, presentation, please.
Would you like to hear how the Finance Committee-
I'm sorry, you want to give us a recommend, the Finance Committee report?
Finance Committee voted 12 to 0 to 0 to approve and recommend to town meeting Article 8 as written in the warrant.
Thank you very much. All right, at this point in time, presentation, please. And we have Sewer Superintendent Keith Nastasia. Thank you.
Good evening, Keith Nastasia, Water Sewer Superintendent. This is the annual operating budget for-
Yeah, you're gonna have to speak up nice and loud or I'll bring the microphone up to you a little bit. I think that might pull up.
This is the annual sewer operating budget for FY 26. So for salaries for existing staff, dedicated employees, very talented. Includes the MWA assessment.
Thank you.
Expenses for additional, you know, we took on an additional pump station. So increase in electrical costs. Increase, cover all costs for additional valves, pumps, and any type of associated fittings.
Thank you, Keith. I just want to get clarification. As you see on the article itself, has one figure for estimated cost, and the motion has the actual cost, or the real cost. The cost in the motion is the one we're going with, is the correct one. The estimated cost in the top, just below the article, is just an estimated cost. All right, everybody clear on that? So what's in the motion is the correct numbers. Okay, just want you to be clear on that. Okay, at this point in time, technical questions. Are there any technical questions? The amount in the motion is $9,176,193.56. That's the amount in the motion. Everybody good? Okay.
Mr. Moderator, it says appropriate to some 9156, but it should be 9176.
Well, the one in the estimated cost is just an estimated cost.
Yeah, but, okay, see, it says proposed motion, the town vote pursuant to provision, General Law 44, 53 F and appropriate some 9156.
Oh, okay, I see that.
It should be 9176, as it's written in the book.
There's a couple different numbers up there. Is the book correct?
Well, the Finance Committee put the book together.
Yeah, I think we're good. We're good? Everybody good with those numbers? Okay, okay, technical questions? Anybody seeing none? We're gonna move on pro and con debate. Seeing none? Okay, just one second. Okay, this is a simple majority. All right, can we get the motion? Excuse me, the, we're ready to go on Article 8. Ready, okay, please vote now. 1, 2, or 3. Simple majority. Okay, Article 8 passes. 126 yes, 6 no, 0 abstentions. So 126, 6 and 0. Thank you. Okay, we move on. We're on to Article 9, Water Department Enterprise Fund. That appears on page 28, 28 of your books. Mr. Anokian, I'm ready. Go ahead, sir.
That the town vote pursuant to the provisions of General Law Chapter 44, Section 53 F and 1/2 to appropriate the sum of $6,197,836 to fund the water department for fiscal year 2026 with $6,197,836 to be raised from FY 2026 water department enterprise revenue.
Seconded by Elliot Hansen.
And the Finance Committee voted 12 to 0 to 0 to approve and recommend to town meeting Article 9 as written in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Anokian. Okay, presentation, the presentation, Keith?
Keith Nastasia, Water Sewer Superintendent. This is FY 26 annual operating budget. This includes salaries, expenses, which include, you know, higher costs of chlorine, chemicals, electricity, pots to keep the stations up and running. It also includes fittings, valves, to keep the, maintain the distribution system. And most of all, to our dedicated and talented staff committed to providing safe drinking water and maintaining the distribution system to provide safe potable water to all your residents.
Okay, thank you very much. Technical questions? You have a point of order on this? Why don't you rise then, state your name? Tell us your point of order.
Juan Fox, Precinct 1.
Nice and loud, sir. Nice and loud.
Juan Fox, Precinct 1. The numbers, once again, don't match, but it's in the book.
Mr. Moderator, as defined-
Yes.
As defined at the town meeting, Finance Committee meeting, it's the motion numbers that matter. The other number, which is 619719326, that was estimated cost. And the motion is actually 6197836. Thank you.
Yep, and the motion, it's, could you just, sick, can you read that number out again? 6 million? Thank you very much. Thank you both. Okay, everybody clear on that? That's in the motion. All right, I don't see anybody up for the technical questions. Want to move on? Pro and con debate? Anybody over there?
What was the question, Mr. Moderator?
No, I'm asking about technical questions. Any technical-
I don't have any, but thanks for checking with me, though.
Thank you very much for the, well, the comments. All right, pro and con debate? Hearing none? All right, this is a simple, this is borrowing, correct? Just want clarification, borrowing? No borrowing? Okay, my bad. Okay, I'm just reading the article. Okay, this is a simple majority. Are we ready to vote? Please vote now. 1, 2, or 3. Simple majority. All right, Article 9 passes. 129 yes, 2 no, 0 abstentions. I declare that a vote. Okay, Article 10, that appears on page 30. I'm gonna recuse myself from this article. I'm gonna ask the deputy moderator to step forward. Kamel Druze, when she has a moment.
All right, Article 10, Cable Public Access Enterprise Fund, appropriate for fiscal year 26 cable costs? The proposed motion?
That the town vote in accordance with the provisions of General Law Chapter 44, Section 53 F and 1/2 to appropriate the sum of $498,771 to fund the Cable Public Access Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 2026 with $498,771 to be raised from FY 2026 Cable Public Access Enterprise Fund revenue.
Seconded by Elliot Hansen. Finance Committee report?
Finance Committee voted 10 to 1 to 1 to approve and recommend to town meeting Article 10 as written in the warrant. David Lowry abstained from the vote.
And presentation of the article? And presentation of the article?
Madam Moderator, to members of the body, I would be happy to answer any financial questions. Madam Moderator, members of the Board, Town Meeting Reps, I do not work for SMAC, but I'd be more than happy to answer any financial questions. Technical questions will have to come from Anya of SMAC.
Do we have any, anyone with technical questions? Larry, are you approaching a microphone? Okay.
Just have a question, will any of this money be used to pay for legal fees?
Yeah, everyone, the microphones are really tough to hear tonight, so make sure you're talking right into them, please.
Just asking if any of this money will go toward paying for legal fees for SMAC?
That is a question that I could not answer as their pass-through account. They send us an invoice, we send them the money, it's strictly Verizon and Comcast pass-through funding. If you have a budgetary issue, I would recommend that Anya of SMAC come down to answer any type of budgetary question. Anya, are you available to come down? Okay. I assume that no one's here to answer to the budgetary questions. There's not much I can tell you more than that. My apologies on behalf of SMAC, I guess.
Okay, through you, Deputy Moderator, is there anyone here who can answer that question?
I will relay that question to the body, is there anyone who has knowledge of the finances and the budget of SMAC and the ability to answer questions? I think you're about to get some assistance.
Don't run, you'll fall down, little girl. Anya, the question has to do with budget and whether or not you can pay legal through the funding you're getting through town.
Could, could I ask that you introduce yourself? We haven't met, so I can't introduce you, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Anya Zolavnik, Stoughton Media Access Corporation Station Manager. So, the money that we get from town, excuse me, first again. So, the money that we get from town is used for paying rent, for paying salaries, for purchasing new equipment, for paying utilities, and also sometimes for paying legal fees.
Okay, so the answer is yes, that some of this money will go toward paying legal fees for SMAC?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Lisa Lyons, Precinct Two. So, I, I just want to reiterate what the Finance Director said, is that SMAC is a completely independent media organization from the town of Stoughton. And like any other business, they have all types of expenses. But it provides a valuable service to the taxpayers of Stoughton and residents of Stoughton because it's supposed to be an independent source from town government. Is that a correct statement?
That is correct. As you, probably most of you understand, the media has to be really independent. So, this is very common for the state of Massachusetts, that media centers are nonprofits. And the reason for it is that we need to be independent and be in charge of our own finances.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Pat Holburn, Precinct Four. If I could just be a little clearer, does that mean that the citizens will pay both ends of the lawsuit that SMAC has filed against the town? If we fund this, we'll pay for the SMAC side of the lawsuit and we'll also have to pay for defending the lawsuit?
So, as I mentioned before, the money that we get in franchise fees, which are collected from cable costs and Verizon franchise fees. And once this money goes to SMAC, we use it for many different purposes, like rent, paying salaries, buying equipment, and also from time to time for paying legal expenses.
Just the second part of that question, Madam Moderator?
Yes.
The town's expenses are paid by its insurance company, Maya Insurance. And any judgment or liability will also be paid by the insurance company. Taxpayers will not pay a dime of our defense of this legal action.
Thank you for that. Carolyn?
Hi, Carolyn Campbell, Precinct Four, I have two questions. First, is the SMAC is a nonprofit, is there an audit? Are you audited on, is the organization audited financially? And if so, who does that?
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question?
Does the SMAC board get a financial, is the SMAC organization, is your nonprofit, are you financially audited every year, and if so, who does that?
Yes, so the station does get a financial audit every year, and we file all the necessary paperwork. And we have one company that does our payroll and weekly accounting. And we also have another independent company that does our audit.
Okay, thank you. And the next question I have is, are there any restrictions of who can serve on the Board of Directors of the SMAC?
So, the Stoughton Media Access Corporation Board is made out of five members. Two of them are appointed by the Select Board, one is appointed by the school committee, and two are appointed by the members of SMAC.
Thank you.
Yep, Molly.
Molly Cochran, Precinct Two, I just want to follow up on a comment that Mister Coulter made with respect to the town not having any financial exposure or effect from the lawsuit that is brought by SMAC. My question number one is, is there a deductible for this lawsuit, and how much is that deductible? And secondly, I think, can we all acknowledge that when anybody reports a lawsuit to their insurance company, their insurance rates go up?
Madam Moderator.
Yes.
Molly's a hundred percent correct. Although there's no direct expense associated with the, with the defense of the lawsuit or any potential judgment, our rates for insurance, which are over a million dollars a year, will certainly be increased significantly in the defense of this suit. The premiums.
Noah?
Noah Beetharone, Precinct Six. What will be the effects of a no vote on this, on this motion? Or Article, rather.
If, Elizabeth Zaleski, Finance Director. If there is a no vote-
Ms. Zaleski, can you get a little closer to the mic? They're really tough tonight. I apologize, I know it's hard to talk right into it, but it's very hard to hear. Yes. You're welcome.
Through you, Madam Moderator, to the body. Should this article get voted down, the town would not be sending checks over to SMAC, and we would be holding on to the funding that comes in, the town retains the funding. And then SMAC would have to run their operations technically on whatever funding they have available at the time.
Ms. Zaleski, can you, can you restate that again, folks weren't able to hear?
I don't know if it's me, if it's the microphones, but technically, if this gets voted down, the money that comes into the town each year would not be going out to SMAC. It would be held in, on the town book, and it would not be released to SMAC because the town meeting voted not to appropriate the money out to the Cable Access Corporation. Cable access at that point in time, without the funding from the town, would need to find their own funding within whatever balances that they have. Was that clear? Clear, Ron?
It's, it's clear in part, and I'm just not entirely clear on the consequences of, of what would come next, whether we would lose access to footage and so on.
I believe, if I may, based on my understanding of what Ms. Zaleski says, is that the, the funding here would not be allocated to the Stoughton Media Access Corporation. If they were to find funding in other ways, they could continue their business as, as they wish. But that this money would not go to them, and then the corporation itself would need to make decisions about what that meant in terms of their services. Am I correct on that? Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Madam Moderator.
Yes, Mister Coulter?
I want to be very careful because I'm subject to this lawsuit, and I don't want to get any deeper than I already am. But I believe what would happen if the town meeting failed to appropriate funding, that, as, as Elizabeth said, is a pass-through. We get the money from Verizon and from Comcast. We then receive a bill from SMAC, which is supposedly technically equal to the money we get from the cable companies. We then pass it through, the money is our money, we pass it through for SMAC to provide the services they provide. If the legislative body, and I'm not an attorney, so let me preface that, if the legislative body does not allocate the money through this process, then we would be prohibited from passing that money through and would need to find an access or an alternative means of providing public access channel. It would create a fair degree of chaos. It would. But it would mean that we would have to mobilize quickly to find an organization that we could bring forth to the fall town meeting and ask for you to allocate the money that we'd be receiving every month to that organization or to SMAC, one or the other. All funding for every department is subject to appropriation by the legislative body. Thank you.
Peter Murphy?
Peter Murphy, Precinct Two. I'm not sure if you actually somewhat clarified my question, but are you saying that the money through Comcast and through Verizon goes to the town first and then to SMAC? So, that's SMAC's only income?
The money paid by Comcast and Verizon is paid to the town. The town chooses, under contract, to have SMAC be the operator of our station. They're the operator of the public access channel by a very detailed contract.
Okay. The equipment that SMAC has and utilizes, is that owned by SMAC or is that owned by the town?
That is owned by the town.
Okay, and one last question, is SMAC still talking about moving?
You'd, you'd have to ask SMAC that. Thank you.
Could you repeat your last question?
What's that?
Could you repeat your last question, please?
The last question is, is SMAC still in the process of thinking about moving their location?
As far as I know, that was never the case. SMAC moved to the current location thirteen or fourteen years ago. We're just about to renew our lease. So, our plan is to stay in the same location that we are right now. I also wanted to address one more thing. So, as you know, we are funded by the franchise fees that are coming from Comcast and Verizon. And this money does go to the town, and then it's being appropriated at the annual town meeting. And, you know, this is the money that we use for our operations. And we provide a lot of services to the town, we cover all the government meetings, we cover a lot of things that take place at the schools, at different municipal buildings, all kinds of different events. So, we cover a lot of things, you know, that are supported by the money that we get from the town in franchise fees.
Thank you.
Back up, were you at the microphone? No, okay.
Steve Wilkinson.
Thank you, Steve Wilkinson, Precinct Four. If we don't allocate these funds, do we risk losing the revenue from Comcast and Verizon that we would normally get to support the station? In other words, if we don't have a station, will Comcast and Verizon not send us the money?
So, the money will come to the town anyway, from Comcast and Verizon. The town has a contract signed with both cable providers. However, this money can only be used for PEG access-related services, which is, you know, the services that we provide to the town, covering different government meetings, covering different events at the schools, covering different, you know, events that take around the, the town.
Thank you.
Mister Guerin?
Jim Guerin, Precinct Six. Do we have, to the, through you, Madam Moderator, to the town manager, do we have an alternate method of meeting the open meeting law for the people who don't attend the meetings if we don't have SMAC?
Nothing in, through you, Madam Moderator, nothing, to my knowledge, in the open meeting law requires meetings, public meetings, to be televised. Nothing. In response, if I may, Jim, to the, to the last question, the access agreement, the PEG agreement, is not between SMAC, Comcast, and Verizon. The PEG agreement is between the town of Stoughton, Comcast, and Verizon. They give us this money to contract with a competent vendor. And it doesn't, it doesn't direct which vendor that must be contracted with.
But isn't the intent of the open meeting law is to allow people to know what's going on, even the people that can't attend these meetings?
Of course. But there are communities out of the three-hundred-and-fifty-one cities and towns that don't have access to PEG. So, no, it's not a state law that it must be covered by any access channel. It's, it's certainly an advantage in terms of transparency and communication. And, and we would never, I shouldn't speak for policymakers, I suggest that we would never not have a cable provider. Thank you, thank you, Madam Moderator.
Hi, Phil Connors, Precinct Two. Through you, Madam Moderator, to whomever can answer from the town, what's the nature of our contract with SMAC? Specifically, the terms, the, the years we've agreed to work with them, and when that might be up?
Madam Moderator. It would take quite an evening to discuss the, all the terms. It's about twenty-nine pages of, of legal language. And there are responsibilities and obligations and covenants on both sides. And the agreement is posted online, and I'd be happy to put it on my website tomorrow morning, so you have access to that agreement.
So, just to clarify, and this can be my second question, that's fine.
Say that again.
The, is there a time limit, or was this some sort of agreement made in perpetuity or until there was some breaking of these terms?
I, I'll go so far, and then I'll be careful after that. That provision of the contract requires not for a perpetuity timeframe or a length of the contract. It, it offers a prescription for terminating the contract for cause when called for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I respond to this as well? Can I respond to this as well?
Let's take the next question, then.
Yeah, can I respond to this question about the contract as well?
The previous question?
Yeah.
Yes, briefly, please.
So, our contract with town is very similar to the contracts that other towns have. And one thing that I'd like you to keep in mind, that is very important, that the community television stations are independent and that no one can try to influence what is being shown or not.
shown or not. So just, I wanted everyone to keep that in mind, that our contract is very similar to contracts that other town has, and that we also need to have a certain degree of independence.
Thank you. John Anzavino.
John Anzavino, precinct four. Through you, Madam Moderator, maybe the finance director could correct me or answer this question. I believe within the past couple of years, while I was on the finance committee, we got a report that showed a deficit for this enterprise fund of thirty-eight thousand dollars in effect, around that amount. And the question was asked, how can this show a deficit? And I believe the response was, they received more money than what the town brought in. So my question would be, if that's the case, did they ever reimburse the town?
Madam Moderator, to the member of the body, the deficit that was out there as certified by the Department of Revenue, that has been satisfied. That is completely gone.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Elliot Hanson.
Let me ask a question here. The money Comcast and the cable companies give, it goes to the town and passed on to SMAC, all right? And SMAC does something in return for that money, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. If the money doesn't get passed through SMAC, and they do not do what they're supposed to do because they don't have the funds, which we finally made it equal funds, isn't that breach of contract?
Two separate issues. Great question, Elliot. Every dollar this legislative body spends is subject to appropriation. My contract is guaranteed. If you don't fund it, and I'm not suggesting that, and if you don't fund it, then the town can't pay it. And that's the only exception to any contract. We're building a school. When we hire contractors, the payment of those contractors will be subject to appropriation. It's part of the Massachusetts procurement law. So it creates a dilemma, there's no question. And again, I, please don't mean that, I don't mean this disrespectfully, we will never be without PEG access regardless of what this body does. The funding is there from Verizon and Comcast. We will continue to have funding to fund it once you say go, regardless of who the provider is. There may be a delay, but you'll have PEG access. The question about the contract between Verizon and Comcast is between those two providers and the town. It's not with SMAC. They're not signatory to that contract.
Marina? Marina, are you at the mic?
Marina Ryan, precinct seven. I'd like to move the question.
We usually do not move the question during
The debate.
Technical questions. We usually wait until we're in pro con debate for that, so I'm going to hold that and see if we have any more technical questions. Alicia.
Alicia Rinaldi, precinct four. I was wondering that if this body votes no, are we subjecting the town to further litigation? Could there be further liability that we are being exposed to as a town by a no vote?
Not a legal response, because I'm not an attorney, but as I said before, all contracts the town signs are subject to appropriation.
Pat Colber, precinct four. Oh, I'm sorry, was I next? Or did I jump over Becca?
Nope.
Sorry. Could you just tell me the names of the board members, please, of SMAC? I know we said how they get in there, but who are the board members?
Yes, so two members of SMAC board are appointed by the select boards. One member is appointed by the school committee, and two members are appointed by the members of Stoughton Media Access Corporation.
I'm looking for the names. Could you provide the names of the individuals in each of those designations that you just described?
So I am gonna list the current members of the board. We're just about to have elections, where two new board members are gonna be elected. So the current board members are Bob Mullen, Gina Cow, Stephen Bates, David Laurie, and Peter Brown.
Thank you.
Eric Coleman.
Eric Coleman, precinct five. Now, this is to fund, this article is to fund the Cable Public Access Enterprise Fund. It is not specifically for SMAC, is that correct?
Our contract, we have a contract with SMAC for them to provide PEG access. The people who have the money that pay us, don't, they specify a provider, but they make no reference to which provider. So no, it does not mention SMAC.
Thank you.
Is that clear?
I think so. So it's not for SMAC specifically, it's for any cable access
It provides us money to provide cable access
That we hire.
With a provider. Thank you.
Are you right there for pro con?
No. Technical question.
You, didn't you already ask a technical question?
Don't we get two?
I don't remember if you asked one or two at the time. I just remember that you were at the mic.
I asked one. So I just, as a follow-up, this, the vote on this, should we vote yes, it's for giving the town of Stoughton an independent media regardless of who it is. Is that a correct statement, Anya?
Yes, that is correct. The money will go to Stoughton Media Access Corporation, which is right now a nonprofit, independent from the town, and the money will be mostly used for, to pay salaries. That means that, you know, you're gonna see people at your annual town meeting that record every annual town meeting, all the select board meetings, school committee meetings. So the public will have access and will be informed about what takes place in the town.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I'd like to refer the members to the actual article, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer from the funds of the treasury, if any, borrow sufficient funds, blah, 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 to fund the Cable Public Access Enterprise Fund. And the motion says that the town vote in accordance to the provisions of General Law forty-four, the sum of four hundred, nowhere in the motion does it say SMAC.
So I have a clarifying question, then. Does that mean that the body could fund this fund? Are there, is it likely that that money would go anywhere other than into the contract with SMAC that's in existence?
That's up to the will of the body. The article says just fund public access channel. If there was a friendly amendment to say, as selected or in accordance with a contract, that's up to the body, and I wouldn't advise either way on that. But this is just to fund your public access channel. Over here is a contract between SMAC and the town, a contract that is under duress right now. But really, again, this is, this is why town meeting members get paid the big bucks. This is a difficult issue.
Yeah, Frank Lyons, precinct eight. I got a question. It sounds like the left hand is suing the right hand, and there were some questions about the board for SMAC, and I think you just said that a couple of members of the board are up, coming up for election, and the people that vote for that are the members of SMAC? Who are the members of SMAC, and how do you become a member?
So SMAC board members are appointed every two years. Two members of SMAC board are appointed by the select boards, and last time the select board appointed two SMAC members, it was last year. Either, it's usually the end of May or the beginning of June. So again, the select board will be choosing two new SMAC board members next year, at the end of May or beginning of June. The same goes for school committee. The person that was appointed by the school committee was appointed last year, and this seat will be up next year at the end of May or beginning of June. And the members which of Stoughton Media Access Corporation, which are producers, residents who produce the shows. We have also elections every two years, and this year, the two new members will be announced at the beginning in May.
So it's not clear to me. Could I become a member and vote if I wanted to?
Yes, absolutely. Any resident, anyone who lives in Stoughton can become a Stoughton Media Access Corporation member, and we always make sure that we advertise this in suburban shopper, on our website, anywhere else that we can, so people know that they can become members of Stoughton Media Access Corporation and vote for two seats every two years.
Is there any fee or anything?
Yes, so there is a fee, twenty-five dollars.
So...
Wait, Frank, that's a lot of questions.
Okay, sorry.
But I'm sure she would be very happy to answer them by email.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Through you, Madam Moderator. I remember when you came before
Please identify yourself at the microphone, thank you.
Sorry. Through you, Madam Moderator, terribly sorry about the microphone there. I remember when you directed, came before
Please identify yourself, name and precinct.
Yeah, sorry. John Walsh, precinct three, A. I. K. Sedov. Again, through you, Madam Moderator, to the director, I remember when you came before us, the finance committee, you talked about salaries. I don't see anything in the line item here. Essentially, how much are the people getting raises, and by what percentage is your, as a director, going up? And that we basically fund, giving you a raise to sue us?
Those are all great questions, so I can tell you that it doesn't happen very often, but from time to time, as you know with media, sometimes, you know, different parties see it in a different way, and sometimes, you know, there is some type of a conflict, but I can assure you that's, you know, not why I'm here. My job, you know, I see my job really as someone who tries to record as many meetings as possible, so residents are being informed, you know, if you can't come to the meeting, then you can watch your meeting later on. We try to record as many things as we can at your public schools, at, you know, other events that take at the library, or, you know, any other municipal building. So we're really here, you know, to provide as much coverage as we can and be independent. It's really important, you know, that your local media is independent, that we can cover, you know, as many things as we can, and that nobody tries to influence us in any way. So this is really a vote for, you know, independence of your local media.
Do you, Mr. Walsh, do you feel like your question about the... Yeah. Could, could, is there information about his specific question regarding salaries and where to find that information and information about salary increases?
Yes, so most of our money that we get from the town goes to our salaries, and we keep those private as any nonprofit, you know, in Massachusetts, that it's really the same for all the other community television stations. And I can tell you that people that were in PEG access really don't make a lot of money. We really, you know, our salaries compared to teachers in the beginning of their career or in the mid-career, it's not a profession that is paid very well.
I think that that information is not available.
Paul Bellevoe, precinct three.
I'm so sorry. Yeah, Piper.
Yeah, Piper Slonsky, precinct seven. Madam Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to table Article ten until such time, to provide time for amendments to be suggested ahead of time.
Hang on one second, I see you, but what, excuse me, can you advise me on procedure here to make a motion to table this article? Is that, can be, is that something that can be done at any point? It can be done during the process? I'm just checking on procedure. So advice of, or from town council is that in order to table the article, that requires a two-thirds majority vote, and there's no discussion of whether or not to table the article. I have also heard that there may be someone at a microphone offering a friendly amendment, and so I am providing that information to you.
I can withdraw my proposed motion to allow for a friendly amendment.
All right. Did you have a technical question?
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna take a technical question here and then go back to Ms. Marksman.
Paul Bellevoe, precinct three. The technical question would be, is, if we approve this for the funding and at some future date, is this funding binding us for 2026 to SMAC? No. Okay. My next question is, so we fund this, and then who makes the decision if we're gonna continue with SMAC or move on to another company?
In case people couldn't hear that, the answer to that is that the select board makes that determination.
Okay. So I think base, no comment.
Thank you. If you would like a point of personal privilege, I will grant it to you. Turn the microphone on now. Push the button. Scott, push the button.
Okay. I just have some information
Please identify yourself.
Scott Carrara, precinct two. This is a very simple thing we're making a big, big deal out of. The money is coming in. This is just the fund, the enterprise fund. This, not enterprise, but the, yeah, the enterprise fund for it. We're not saying it's gonna be Northeast, talking people, it's not gonna be SMAC. The board of selectmen decides who we give it to. And it could maybe possibly be if we don't do this, it could cause a breach on our side because we do have a contract that's involved right now. So by not funding this, you're not gonna fix anything except cause deep trouble. It's gotta be funded, the money's coming in. If SMAC walks away, we walk away, somebody else will fill the shoe. That's all I have to say. It's not a very, very technical thing, it's very simple. We're just asking this money that comes through gets here. That's it.
Thank you. Becca?
Becca Marksman, precinct seven. Can I offer a friendly amendment just to confirm what...
I believe friendly amendments can be made on the floor. Is that correct? Jane? Is that correct? But friendly amendments can be made on the floor, they don't need to be submitted 24 hours in advance the way a substantive amendment does? We're all friends here. I believe that we have made friendly amendments on the floor, but we're checking with town council to make sure that this would be valid before proceeding. It seems that there is not a one-hundred percent It seems that there is not a 100% clear answer to that, but in my recollection, we have allowed friendly amendments to be made from the floor, and so I will permit that in this instance.
Thank you. The writing's no longer up there, so I'm gonna say the first part incorrectly, but my, I guess my friendly amendment is to amend the article for the body to approve the funding for the town with the condition of finding a new provider. No? Okay, vote it down.
So that feels like a pretty substantive change. So that she wants to write that the amendment would be that this motion would be in place with the provision that the town find a different provider. Yeah. Yeah, I think that that is substantive enough that it would have needed to be submitted in advance, 48 hours in advance. I know that those procedural motions were not in play 48 hours ago, so I believe what would need to happen would be, we would need to approve suspending the rules in order to make a substantive amendment from the floor, if we wanted to. That would be the process that would need to happen in order to try to make a more substantive amendment on the floor.
I'd like...
Hang on, we're gonna check with Town Council again, because it's also possible that that would exceed the scope of this as the legislative body to be mandating the work of the Select Board. Can you comment on that, please? Right, but beyond the article issue, can this body put a mandate like that to the Select Board? Or is that outside the scope of town meetings? To tell them that they have to change their contract? Could you speak on it?
Okay, through the moderator. I believe that the condition of directing the Select Board as to who to contract with, and I believe it is beyond the scope of the article, and I believe it is beyond the scope of town meeting.
I can rescind.
Madam Moderator.
Throw it back to Piper.
Always looking for the compromise, Madam Moderator. To Mr. Carrera's point, the Board still retains the right to move towards termination of the contract. My encouraging... I would encourage the members to vote in support of funding the PEG access contract as proposed in the motion. That doesn't prevent from the Board to moving to terminate the contract. Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna go back to Piper since we sort of asked you to step away, and if you...
Sure. Piper Slonsky, Precinct 7. I make a motion to lay it on the table.
Is that seconded by anyone?
Second.
Seconded by Becca Marksman. All right, so as stated, this requires a two-thirds majority in order to pass, and it is not subject to debate, so we aren't discussing whether or not to do it, we are voting on it.
Madam Moderator, point of...
I can't tell who's talking to me. Oh, yes, sorry.
I believe laying on the table is a majority vote, tabling the two-thirds.
Yeah, it's a... It requires a two-thirds majority.
For laying on the table?
Yes.
Okay.
According to the back of town meeting time, although this is Edition 4 and we agreed to work with Edition 3, if you'd like, I can go grab mine and we can look that up, but I'm pretty sure that it is the same. Yep. One moment, please. Yeah, to lay something on the table requires a two-thirds majority vote. Edition 3. All right. I do not trust my ability to hear two-thirds majority, so we're gonna need to do this by clicker. So what we are voting on at the moment, we are not voting on the motion, we are voting on the action to lay this on the table, to not take a vote on it and to move on to other business. And, yes.
Can I speak down before I vote on it?
Yes, I believe a motion can be laid on the table at any point in the hearing of the motion, and I believe that that's why it requires a more substantial vote in order to pass. You're welcome. Yes, Mr. Hanson.
If you want to lay it on the table, you have time, sure, we'll take it off.
So the question is whether laying something on the table requires stipulating the time at which it will be taken off of the table, and I believe the answer to that is that it does not, but I will check with Council. Correct, it does... We do not have to stipulate when we would take it off of the table. I believe that someone would need to bring it forward and move that we bring it off the table, and that would happen at whatever point that happened.
On the same question...
Remember that this is not debatable. Whether we lay something on the table is not a debatable thing. I do want everyone to understand what's happening, but I don't want us to get into debating it, because that is not proper procedure. So...
So I have a question, a follow-up question to the previous speaker. So if there's no time limit, when can someone take something that was tabled off the table?
I believe that they could do that at any point, and it would require a vote... Is it another two-thirds majority then to get it off the table? So at any point, someone could say, "I move that we bring this off of the table, I move that we bring Article 10, which has been tabled, off of the table," and that would require a majority vote in favor in order to resume discussion and debate of that article.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So what we're voting on is whether we lay this on the table, and it requires a two-thirds majority vote in order to pass. Vote 1 for yes, which would lay it on the table, 2 for no, which would mean that we continue with business currently, and 3 to abstain. The vote is 40 yes, 94 no, and 0 abstentions, which has not reached the two-thirds criteria, so we will continue to address this. Just let me write those numbers down, 40, 94, 0. Do we have additional technical questions?
Pro con.
All right. Has ever... Cynthia, I saw your hand, was that for pro con? Were you raising your hand?
My hand was up to finally move the question.
We haven't started the debate yet. I'm... I have seen this done before, and I believe it is in order that I will allow us to hear some pro con before we take a proposal to move the question, because we have not yet heard anyone speak as to why they favor or do not favor this article. Let me check the order in which people came to their microphones. You're the first one in line, but you're not at your microphone.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna alternate between the pro con aisles, but try as much as I can to take you in the order that you came to the microphones if people are at different mics. Are you... Sir, are you at the microphone to speak?
Well, I have a technical question, or can I make it a clarification? And I'll say it, then you tell me the start. Ed Quigley, Precinct 2, do we currently have a contract with SMAC and settle? When does that end?
I believe that has already been asked and answered, which was that that information did not have a set end date.
It's in... It's an open-ended contract.
Unless and until there is a reason for one party or the other to dissolve it, is my understanding based on the previous conversation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right.
Robert Kirby, Precinct 6. We're now in pro and con debate?
Yes, I should say that. We are now moving into pro con debate, and as I said, I will try to do my best to take... to alternate the order of pro and con comments.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I am in favor of voting yes on this, because we're not resolving the conflict with SMAC in particular, we're just transferring funds, like Mr. Carrera said, this is not that complicated. We're not going to be able to litigate or solve any of the other issues, we are just taking care of the business we need to, so for us to belabor this any longer is just an egregious waste of everybody's time. Let's just do it and move on.
All right, everyone. Ms. Colburn?
Pat Colburn, Precinct 4. I couldn't disagree more. I am so incredibly uncomfortable at how many people are involved in this lawsuit, either directly or indirectly, that represent the town, represent town meeting, represent the Finance Committee? How many people are running back and forth to people who should be refused from the room to get points of view and other people saying it at the mic? I don't know what else I can do. As Mr. Carrera said, we can't force them to change from SMAC, but I heard very contradictory information from Mr. Coulter and Mr. Carrera. So all I'm gonna do is vote no, because there's no way I'm okay with any of this that's happening. Thank you.
Ms. Lyons?
I move the question.
All right. I did say that I would hear some pro con, and we have heard some pro con, so this is up to the body. We'll try it with a voice vote. It requires a simple majority to move the question, so that means that we would be stopping the debate, and then we would vote on the article itself. So those in favor of moving the question at this point, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
It's clicker time, yep. Y'all should choose a deputy moderator with better hearing than I have, because I can't make that distinction. So in one moment, we will be voting using our clickers. Remember that this is the... What we're voting on is cutting off debate, we're not voting on the motion, we're voting on whether we stop debating in order to... in order to vote on the motion. So... Good? All right, please vote now. Vote 1 for yes, which means that we stop debate and we vote, vote 2 for no, which means that we continue with pro con debate, and 3 to abstain. All right, the motion to cut off debate is 93 yes, 40 no, and 2 abstentions, so the motion, the moving to cut off debate carries. So we will now move on to voting on Article 10. Is there a very brief summary that would like to be provided by someone who brought this article forward?
Can I...
Yes, I would appreciate brevity, because we've talked about this for a bit.
So I'd like to point some things to everyone here present, that it's not unusual sometimes, you know, to have some type of a disagreement, but I think it's important to keep working on it and, you know, making drastic changes. Probably is not gonna change all that much, the same issues that, you know, exist right now, they're gonna exist in a year or two. The best way to move forward is, you know, to keep working with everyone in the town and finding a solution to it. And I also would like you to remember before your vote that it's really very important to keep the media independent, and you as a body and as residents have a lot of influence over the SMAC. Next time, next year, when two new members are gonna be appointed by the Select Board, you have direct influence over it. The same with the School Committee, and the same with our vote that we have every two years. Everyone is welcome to become, you know, a member and vote. So that's really like the best way to, you know, to have your voice heard, and it's really, I think, important for every town that you have someone in the town that covers all your events, all your government meetings, so you get the coverage. If you can't go to the meeting, you can go to our website or YouTube channel, and you can watch all the meetings that take place in the town and stay informed. We really are all about making sure that residents stay informed. Thank you.
I will recognize the town manager, but keep it short, please.
Much shorter. I believe that was a pro point. Let me give you the con point. Two members of our Board of Selectment, two of the senior members, our Vice Chairman and former Chair, were dispatched by the Board to sit with the SMAC Board to work out the many differences. It was during those discussions we were served. So I appreciate your optimism, but not your bad faith.
All right, so we are going to move on to vote on Article 10, Cable Public Access Enterprise Fund, appropriate for fiscal year '26 cable costs. Let me know when. Is this a two-thirds majority? This is a simple majority vote. As usual, one will be yes to... Voting one will be voting yes to approve this article, voting two will be no to disapprove it, and three is abstaining, and we're just waiting until we get it set up and ready to Thank you for your patience. All right, voting is active now, so again, one is yes, two is no, and three is to abstain. Motion passes, 81 in favor, 48 opposed, and 4 abstentions. Clear that a vote. Thank you. And I don't know where our moderator is. Does anybody know? Should I just keep going? There he is.
Thank you very much, Carmel. All right, let's move on. We're gonna skip over 11, 12, 13, since we voted those on the consent agenda. We're gonna skip over 11, 12, 13, since we voted those on the consent agenda. Okay, that brings us to Article 14, the General Fund Operating Budget. That starts on page 34. Everybody, did everybody find that page? Okay, let's move on. I gotta ask, Mr. Anokian for the motion? When you're ready, sir?
We good to go? That the town vote to appropriate $141,960,660 for the maintenance and support of the several departments of the town for fiscal 2026, and that such sum be expended only for the purposes as described, and further that to meet this appropriation, $90,751,362 and 10 cents be raised in the tax levy, $36,083,394 to be allocated from state aid, $13,159,267 and 90 cents be allocated from local receipts, $71,594 be transferred from Title V local receipts, $71,859 be transferred from Cedar Hill Enterprise Fund, $248,021 be transferred from Public Health VNA Enterprise Fund, $767,663 be transferred from Sewer Enterprise Fund, $807,499 be allocated from local receipts.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Who, was that Elliot Hanson I heard? Yeah, I think he beat you out there, Peter, sorry. Seconded by Elliot Hanson. Okay, can I now have the finance committee reports, please?
Finance Committee voted 10 to 2 to 3 to approve and recommend the town meeting the remaining department budget of $62,745,361.53. The, including the seven departments above that were voted separately, the maintenance and support of the several departments of the town for fiscal 2026 is a total of $141,960,660. The Finance Committee took several votes on this. They've broken up. You want me to read each of those departments?
You might as well, for the record. Thank you.
Finance Committee took several votes regarding the General Fund Operating Budget, Department 161 Town Clerk. Finance Committee voted 13 to 0 to 2 to accept and recommend the town meeting, the Department 161 budget of $337,396. Mark Struck and Joel Wolk recuse themselves from that vote. Department 162, Finance Committee voted 13 to 0 to 2 to accept and recommend the town meeting, Department 162 budget of $58,500. Mark Struck and Joel Wolk recuse themselves from that vote. Department 210 Police, Finance Committee voted 13 to 0 to 2 to accept and recommend the town meeting, Department 210 budget of $9,672,398. Diane Dolan recused herself, Lisa Lyons abstained from that vote. Department 300 Stoughton Public Schools, Finance Committee voted 9 to 5 to 1 to accept and recommend the town meeting, Department 300 budget of $67,256,250.86. Diane Dolan recused herself from that vote. Department 301 Regional Schools, Finance Committee voted 12 to 0 to 1 to accept and recommend the town meeting, Department 301 budget of $1,429,717. Lisa Lyons abstained from that vote. Department 541 Council on Aging, Finance Committee voted 11 to 0 to 4 to accept and recommend the town meeting, Department 541 budget as printed on the warrant, $461,036.61. Lauren Morris recused herself on that. Department 820 State Assessments and Charges, Finance Committee voted 15 to 0 to 0 to accept and recommend the town meeting, Department 820 budget of $5,380,672. Finance Committee voted 10 to 2 to 3 to approve and recommend the town meeting, the remaining department budgets of $62,745,361.53. Lisa Lyons, Linda Renaldi, and David Laurie abstained from that. Including the seven departments above that were voted separately, the maintenance and support of the several departments of the town for fiscal 2026 is a total of $141,960,660. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Want to information, Mr. Moderator? Yes, state your name, please.
Eric Coleman, precinct five. It's now 10:09. I don't think we can complete the budget at this meeting here at this, tonight. Can we stop at a certain time and continue it at, on Wednesday? In other words, do we have to complete this budget tonight, since it's before 10:30? Or can we stop and then continue it later?
We should be able to stop, you know, start the budget and stop at some point.
That's what I'm asking.
That okay with everybody, the members? We might as well try to get, get as far as we can tonight. I know we're not going to complete it.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, all right, at this time, we had, we had the motion, we had the second. We had, we did have the second by Elliot, right? Okay, presentation?
Mr. Moderator, through you?
Yes.
Elizabeth is going to handle the technical questions, light item by light item. I've been asked to give just a brief overview of the budget. If you remember, when I came here two and a half years ago, a question from the body was, where are we today and where will we be in five years? And we were not in good shape three years ago, and I gave an answer that some characterized as arrogant, and I felt horrible about that. I said we will be the shining light on the hill. And people thought that was rather cocky, and perhaps it was, but we are today. I want to congratulate this body. I'm going to give you a few highlights, and it's a tribute to each of you as the legislative body for doing what you've done over the past three years to put this town on very solid footing. I would guess to say that our financial standing is among the top 10% of any other town in the Commonwealth. Let me just take, there were handouts out front, I'm not going to read them to you, you've got them, if not, you can pick them up, but just want to give you a few highlights. We've got a balanced budget without using free cash, a balanced operating budget. Of course, you heard earlier about the enterprise fund. That was a seven-year plan that you fixed in two years. You fixed it because you went along with initiatives proposed by our policymakers and supported by our FinCom. And by working together, this legislative body has got us to a point where we're no longer using free cash in our operating budget. Where I come from, they had $2,000 left under their levy last Saturday with no free cash on hand. Perilous situation to be in. The second point is how conservative are our expense estimates? We're estimating local receipts budget 90% of 2024 actuals. Now, we know that we've got major projects pending that will hit our tax base and give us revenue. And if you don't know that, ask David, he's an expert in this, and I mean that sincerely. But we've still budgeted our receipts at 90% of revenues from a year and a half ago. Couple of other points, this is an important one. We've reduced our municipal employees by 4.4% this year in this budget, by 4.4 fewer people in this budget, pardon me. That's down from 2025 by 19 fewer employees. Now, how do we do that? We do it, and again, I want to give tribute to the policymakers of the town, the select board, and to the finance committee. We said to both of them two years ago, we're going to use technology, and we're going to consolidate jobs for high performers that are capable of doing two jobs. I will give you one example, and then I'm going to be seated, but you're going to see it laced throughout the budget. We lost $100,000 employee in the Water and Sewer Department six months ago. Now add $100,000 plus health insurance, so that's 122, plus vacation benefits and OPIB, it's up over $160,000 a year. Two of the administrative people from the Water and Sewer Department volunteered to fill in and provide those services, each of them getting a $5,000 stipend. So we saved $150,000 because we spent 10. Now, in the beginning, people wanted to know about stipends and pay raises and stuff like that. And if asked those questions tonight, I would say to you, those are fair questions, and we look forward to answering those questions for you. If somebody is getting a above 3% increase, there's a good reason why, and it's not because they're Mark and I, dear friends. It's because we're consolidating roles or elevating somebody's salary to the point where they're at least at average in the marketplace. But there's an explanation for every one of them. So I invite you all to read the handout that was out front, because it's where your town is right now. And for those town meeting members who've been serving for a period of time, and to the policymakers, and to the FinCom members, you should take your hat off and congratulate each other, because that's what you've accomplished. You're among one of the top 10% in the country, in addition to adding, to having $18 million to our savings accounts, which you'll read, which you'll hear about during the special town meeting. One more thing. This is SMAC's equipment.
Oh, kidding, Bob. You get the bill in the morning, don't worry. Thank you, Mr. Colter.
Thank you very much.
Okay, okay, at this point, before we, Biz, before you read the budget numbers, I just to remind people how this is going to work. For the new people, new, new town meeting reps, and obviously the seasoned town meeting reps, as you recall, when Elizabeth Seleski, Finance Director, reads the department number, the name, department number, and the amount, the bottom line amount on that department, if you have a question or any type of issue with that department, we're hoping that you would like to make, let me, let me rephrase that. If you want to hold that department, discuss that department, you have to say loudly, "Hold", and we're going to turn to you and say, state your name and precinct number. All right? And then we're going to continue to go through the entire budget, department name, number, and amount, any other holds, and we'll come back to the beginning. Okay? And then we'll ask you to define what you want to, what, why you wanted to hold that department. Is everybody clear on that? We hope that, Deputy Moderator and I, we're hoping that you would have a, maybe a change. Don't just hold it just to, leave it up to the town meeting reps, you have a right to ask questions, but just to hold it where you could have asked at a, maybe a finance committee budget hearing in the past, a simple question. To hold that, it's sort of like, we'll leave it up to the town meeting reps, but it'd be good to have some substantive information that you're going to try to find or determine at that point in time. All right, so at this point in time, what page are we starting on, Biz? Are we losing people?
In the town meeting warrant book, we're going to be starting?
Yes, I'm sorry, you, okay, I think it's going to start on page?
Page 80.
Page 80, can everybody turn to page 80?
Yes, sir.
And go ahead, Biz, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Elizabeth Seleski, Finance Director for the town of Stoughton. We're beginning the budget read on page 80 in the town meeting book. The first one is Department 111 Town Council, which is the town's legal services. The budget is $350,000. Next, Department 1114 Town Moderator. Town moderator expenses are $3,950, and that includes everything for that department. And we will be going page by page by page throughout this process, there'll be no skipping around this year. Select Board budget, Department 122, total departmental budget, $19,900. Are people able to keep up? Do you want a minute? Keep going, okay. Department 123 Town Manager.
Okay, who, who wanted to hold? Lisa Lyons, and who's the other one? Juan Fox. Okay, go ahead and read the numbers.
Next.
Yep.
Finance Committee, Personnel Services, which is also known as salaries, $7,500. Expense, $419,750. Total departmental budget, $427,250. Department 135 Town Accountant, Personnel Services, $446,495.53. Accountant?
Oh, one, one second, Biz, I'm sorry, did someone say, "Hold"? Who wants to hold? Anybody else? Dave Laurie? Did I get everybody? Two people on the Department 135? Okay, thank you, Biz, go ahead.
Okay. Next is Department 138 Centralized Purchasing, total departmental expenses, $124,400. Department 141 Board of Assessors, Personnel Services, total, $405,226.
Okay, hold on a second, Biz, 141, is that what the holds are? Okay, 141, Juan Fox, who else? Okay, Maria?
141.
Anybody else? I just see I have two holds. Okay, thank you, Biz, go ahead.
You're welcome. Department 145 Treasure Collector, Personnel Services, $454,608.20. Expense total for the department, $183,200. Total departmental budget, $637,220.
All right, all right. Yeah, yeah, let's hold on, let's stop for a second. Okay, I think, what department are we at now, Biz?
We are currently at Department 145.
Okay, that's on page 92.
Treasure Collector.
92. One, page 92, 145, do we have a hold? Juan Fox, Dave Laurie? Any other holds? I have two holds. Okay, okay. Pat Colburn?
Quick, Ford, I'm Mr. Moderator. I asked at the organizational town meeting if when someone holds, if you want everybody who has a question to hold, and you said no. So I'm confused why you're asking for any other holds. As long as there's one hold, you said anyone could ask a question.
Well, we generally shouldn't allow other people to get into the questions, but I think it's probably better, just everybody who wants to hold the departments, hold, speak out and hold them.
Okay, because that's not, I just want to point out, that's not what you said at the organizational town meeting. So just make it clear what you're changing, please.
Okay, thank you. Whoever wants to hold on these departments, if it's five people or 20 people, now's the time to say, "Hold". Okay? Thank you, Pat, for clarifying that, reminding me. Okay? Everybody good with that? Okay, and we left off on Department 145, which we?
Excuse me? Mr. Moderator, I'm not clear on that. So if you don't say, "Hold", you can't ask a question?
Yes, that is correct. If you don't say, "Hold"...
So if I don't say, "Hold" on the budget, I can't ask a question when that part comes up for debate?
That's correct. No, you don't think that's right? Well, I mean, I'm just, we're gonna, it could, we... Okay, let me, let me back up. I mean, it's just, I can see how this is going to get way out of line with all the people. Okay. All right, let me backtrack a little bit. Sorry for the confusion on my part. Few people want to say, "Hold, hold it". We'll go to those people first, and other people can ask questions. Is that what we normally, normally did in the past? Could be a kind of really difficult night coming up. Okay.
I understand, Mr. Moderator, I appreciate that, but I think you would need to understand the way you're yelling, "Holds", not everybody's going to get recognized, you can't hear them, and, you know, someone's moving on, and this maker of the motion's already gone on to the next budget, so it is very confusing for people to make sure that their, their name is associated with the hold. I just, you can just hear, "Hold", Just, you can just hear, "Hold," someone writes it down, and then we move on. But trying to keep track of all the names is turning out to be very difficult. Thank you.
It is difficult. We go through this every year, it's very difficult. Okay. So we ended up on Department 145, page 92. Juan Fox had a hold, and Dave Laurie had a hold. Okay, let's move on.
Page number 94, Department 152, Human Resources.
All right, who had the holds up? Nice and loud, Juan Fox. All right, let's move on, thank you.
Page 96, Department 153, Procurement. Salary budget, $1,053,7485. Expense budget, $5,312. Total departmental, $1,106,8685. Page number 97, Department 155, Information Systems.
Okay, we have a hold. All right, thank you.
Page number 98, Department 159, Facilities. Personnel Services, 252, 222.
It's hard to hear you, Biz.
Okay, well, rearrange that again. Mr. Carlton broke it. So back to Facilities, Personnel Services, 252. 222 is Personnel Services, AKA Salaries. Facilities expenses, $906,750, for a total budget of $1,158,972. Page number 101, Department 161, Town.
Okay, one second. Juan.
Page 101, 161. And that is Town Clerk. I didn't get to say the department.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Next would be page number 104. And that is Department 162, Elections and Town Meeting. Personnel Services, $40,000. Elections Town Meeting, $18,500 for expense.
All right, we have a hold. The Department 162?
Yep.
Juan Fox. Anybody else?
There was 16, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Biz.
Next is Department, page number 105, Department 175, Planning Board. Professional Services is 127,171. Expense total, $5,4600. Total departmental, $1,817,71. Next, page 106, Department 175, Economic Development. Personnel Services, 105,336. Expenses, 238,22. Departmental total, 1,291,58. Total general government as presented, $6,207,439,11. Next, page number 107, Department 210, Police Department.
All right, who's holding? Juan? And Dave Laurie, okay. Go ahead, Biz.
Okay. Page number 111, Department 213, Crossing Guards. Salary, $1,287,42. Crossing Guards expense, $2,400. Departmental total, $1,311,42.
Okay.
Next, page number 112, Civilian Dispatches, Department 217. Personnel Services, 618,68. Total departmental budget, $6,186,8. Page number 113, Fire Department.
Okay, we have a hold. Juan Fox. Okay, Biz, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No problem. Page number 116, Department 241, Building and Zoning. That is Personnel Services, 428,963. Okay.
Dave Laurie, hold. Anybody else? No, okay, go ahead, Biz.
Department, page 118, Department 292, Animal Control. Salary, $8,6433. Expense, $7,460. Total departmental total, $9,389,3. Total public safety budget is $1,864,593,1. Moving on to Education, page number 119, Department 300, Stoughton Public Schools.
Okay, we on, what department are we on, Biz?
Education, Stoughton Public Schools, it's on page 119. And that's Department 300.
Dave Laurie, was you, you had a hold? Okay.
On the same page, just below Stoughton Public Schools, you will see Department 301, Educational, Regional Schools. Regional schools being Southeastern Regional at 1395828, Norfolk County Agricultural, 33889. Regional schools allocation, 1429717. Total public, Stoughton Public Education and Regional, 6868596786. Next is Department 411, Engineering Services.
We have a hold? All right, Juan Fox.
Okay. Page number 122. And this is Department 421, DPW, General and Highway Administration. Would like to make a comment here that we did combine multiple offices and departments within the public works areas. So that'd be DPW. Person. Was that a hold?
No, that was a.
That was a, God bless you.
That was a sneeze of.
God bless you.
Bless you.
Personal services total, 130266848. Expense total, 1341600. Departmental total, 264.
What department are we on?
Oh, we're still on 421.
421.
Yeah, which goes from page number 122 to 123, and ending in 124.
There's a hold on that?
Hold, okay.
Just one hold?
Okay, hold.
Is it after 10:30? Okay, we.
Next department?
Where are we? How many holds? There's not that many holds left. And then when we come back, I'll have, Superintendent, you can come back. We'll come back on Wednesday if you want. You want to do it tonight? No, you can do it tonight if the body wants you to do it. I'm just. Right, I know, it's been a long night. Okay, I'm sorry, Biz, wherever we are.
Mr. Moderator to the body. Page number 125, Department 422, Highway Construction and Maintenance. For members of the body, this department has been eliminated and is now combined with Department 421, DPW. Department 423, Snow Removal. Personnel Services, 116000. Expense total, $284,000. Total budget for personnel is the $400,000. Department number 42, oh, page number 127, Department number 424, Street Lighting. Street lighting budget expense in total is $254,000. Next, page 128, Fleet Maintenance. You will note in the Department 426, Fleet Maintenance, this department has been eliminated and is now combined under Department 421. Page 129, Department 433, Waste Disposal and Sanitation. Personnel Services, 1008216. Let's see, expense totals, $9,396,50. Departmental total, $1,947,866. Public Works Operational Budgets, $6,053,422,88. Next is Department 510, Board of Health.
Which one are we, where are we, Biz?
Page number 132, please.
132, page 132. I'm saying, do you have a hold? 433, Waste. Thank you.
Department 433, hold. That's sanitation.
Okay, so, let me just say, we had a hold on 433? Waste disposal. Okay, can we move on now, please?
Okay. Page number 132. This is Department 510, Board of Health. Board of Health Personnel Services, 191367. Expenses, $9,100. Departmental total, $2,004,67. And page number 133, Department 541, Council on Aging. Personnel Services, 43512661.
Hold by Dave Laurie. Okay, Biz, go ahead.
Okay. So on to page number 135, Department 543, Veteran Services.
Is that you, Dave? I'm sorry, Biz, go ahead.
Department number, page 136, Department number 544, Substance Abuse and Prevention. Salaries, $8,9103. Expense, $1,1240. Departmental total, $1,003,43. Page number 137, Department 549, Commission on Disabilities. Total expenses in that department, $7,000. Total for Health and Human Services category budget, 1,208,52051. Moving on, page number 138, Department 610, Library. Salaries, $9,963,99.
Okay, we have a hold on that.
Okay.
Oh, anybody else? Dave Laurie too. Go ahead, Biz.
Page number 140, Department 615, Historical Commission. Personnel Services, which is salary, budget $500. Expenses, budget $300. Total departmental budget, $800.
Point of order?
Yes.
Eric Coleman, Precinct 5. Do we need the budget broken down into salaries and expenses? Or can we just have the bottom line to move things along a little bit better?
Bottom line would be easier.
Yeah, okay, bottom line, just to go a little faster tonight. We still have a few more to go to. What time we have? 10:37. Does the body want to continue?
No.
Mr. Moderator?
Who's asking? Becca, go ahead.
Becca Marks in Precinct 7. Can we suspend until Wednesday?
Second.
Yes, let's suspend. I know it's, we still have some more. The other thing I want to mention, we have a procedural motion. On Wednesday, when we first come here, we have the Stoughton Equal Opportunity Community bylaw for us to deal with. That's the first order of business on Wednesday, May 7. Then we'll kind of have to come to the budget. Okay, everybody clear on that? Okay, so we are holding, we are stopping at page 140, I believe. Is that correct, Biz? 140. Biz, thank you very much. I know it's a lot of work there. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Take a vote on what? We're not gonna take a vote tonight, we're gonna just, we're gonna come back on Wednesday on this. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Peter Murphy made a motion. Juan Fox, second. Do you make a motion to adjourn? I can't. Okay, Juan Fox, motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. See you, see you Wednesday night.